Ready whenever you're ready. Good evening, welcome to the planning board meeting of August 12th. I'm sorry, we're starting a couple of minutes late, but we were waiting on a couple of people to arrive. Just reminding everybody at home and everybody here and my fellow board members that we are starting a new format. While it's new to us and we can expect that, you know, we'll get better at it over the first couple of times. We are going to give it at least a three-month try to see if it improves our efficiency and our ability to stay efficient and effective and functional. So, we have assigned no times to any of the public hearings. We will open all of the public hearings that we're going to talk, discuss tonight. We will open them at the same time and we will manage the agenda as best we can accordingly. And we will largely go in order of the way that the public hearings are listed. The administrative items that are listed at the front will be taken at different times as makes sense. So, to that end, the first administrative item is the Growth Study Committee appointments. Because we have one applicant for the position phoning in and another applicant who could not be here at 7:30 and wanted to know what time to aim for, we selected a time for the Growth Study Committee discussion and that will be at 8:30. But, we can take the other items quickly whenever we are able to fill in. So, is the, would the board like to sort of chip away at the administrative items quickly? Or start with public hearings?
I'd like to do a few administrative items, I think.
Okay, first we have to open, entertain a motion to open all the public hearings that are on our agenda tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, the first administrative item that we can take care of is the zoning advisory committee appointments. We do have two at-large positions. We do have a planning board representative to reappoint or appoint and we have the confirmation of other board liaison positions. So, John, take us away.
So, the two at-large positions, there was only one applicant for it. And then there's Mr. Cuttino. Do you want me to read out these?
You might as well do the whole thing. And Mary has been our representative for the last year and hoping that, we've talked about this, hoping that she still believes she would like to continue.
Yes.
Awesome. We should ask if anybody else is desperately interested in challenging Mary for the position? What? No? And also, the other board liaison positions.
So, Mr. Foissy was recommended by the chamber.
Yeah.
And Mr. Barker-Hook was recommended by the Conservation Commission.
Okay, and the ZVA still hasn't met-
Has not had a meeting, so they can't recommend yet. They anticipate that happening in September.
Okay, and we can, we can deal with that at that time. So, what I would recommend unless anybody has any objection is we vote the slate as it was just outlined. Mr. Cuttino has been on the ZAC for a great many years and offers a lot of experience. So unless anybody has any objections, I would entertain a motion to move all of those appointments.
So moved.
Second.
And I would like to just clarify that Mr. Cuttino is going for a two-year appointment and that's the, that's the term-
So, for now, the terms are always going to be two years, is that right?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, when we formed this new committee last year, we had some two-year appointments and some one-year appointments so that there would be some staggering. And so from going forward, they will all be two-year appointments.
Can I clarify, there's an additional two-year term vacant?
Right, there is. Yep, there is.
If we think of anyone who might, we might encourage to apply, we could do that.
Yep, so first, all those in favor voting the slate as outlined?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? And then, yes, Amy, thank you. There is one at-large position, it's a two-year at-large position that is open and we encourage any interested member of the public to investigate it and apply if they are interested. It would be a great place to start, to speak to Mary by email or by phone or whatever and get an idea of the time commitment and what the job is. But it's a great position for anybody. People who have not had experience in town government yet and anybody who has experience in town government. It's a nice spot and it's very, it's very meaningful for this board to have invested people on that ZAC. Okay, there is a planning board vacancy.
Yes.
So, Mr. Atwell, congratulations to him, has accepted a job that makes it impossible for him to continue serving as an elected member of a town board. So, his position is open and this meeting and this notice serves as public notice and allows us to start the clock, encouraging people to think about applying. It's an awesome, fun board, hardly any work. Kidding about that.
We are awesome and fun.
Yeah, it is awesome and fun. It is, it is a sizable time commitment, but any one of us would be happy to speak to anybody who is interested in applying. Certainly, John is always available at Town Hall. And what is the process as we know it with the Board of Selectmen? Once we make it public?
Yep.
We can, we will notice them formally?
Yes, so we will let them know. They send out an advertisement.
Yes.
And then we schedule a joint, so that has to be advertised for seventeen days.
Seventeen days.
And then we schedule a joint meeting.
Okay, do we have a date that we can aim for, for the joint meeting?
So, if everything goes as scheduled, it looks like September 9th could be possible for a joint meeting.
Is that our meeting?
That is.
Okay, so, so, the deadline to submit your application, if we are able to have the joint meeting on September 9th and I think I speak for the board, we would like to do it sooner rather than later. It's the best time to get onto the board because you want to, you want to be on when applications are starting and the full year is almost in front of us. So, I hope that we can do it on September 9th, certainly. The deadline to get your application in will certainly be the Tuesday before that meeting, likely. Is that true?
I believe you need seventeen days' notice and then a seven-day notice of the meeting.
Okay.
So, I would have to check and see when the deadline for an application.
Okay, so stay tuned on the deadline for the application, but we won't meet again. So definitely stay in communication either by email with a member of the planning board or the professional staff at the Town Hall so that you are aware of the deadlines. But they will all be posted, yes.
And what was Patrick's remaining term?
So, he was just elected.
Yeah, but I didn't know how long his term was that he elected for.
So, he would, so whoever would fill this position only serves until the next election.
That's true.
Then the person who gets elected in that position fills out the rest of Patrick's term.
That's true, but he only has one year on the term. He took the one-year on expired seat. So, it's, it's one year no matter, no matter what for Patrick, so. And then we would encourage you to, you know, run, run for the five-year slot after that. Okay, so that, so if anybody has any questions about that or interest, please let us know, any one of us know. The Planning Board Administrative Rules and Amendments, John.
So, there were some changes to the Planning Board Administrative Rules that were just changes that have taken place over the last few years. They're a whole different topic.
Yeah, did anybody have any questions or concerns with them? I did not when I read through them.
I read through them, they didn't seem controversial in any way.
Didn't seem controversial to me either. Do you need a vote to accept them? I'll entertain a motion to accept those administrative changes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify-
All the discussion.
What?
Discussion.
Sure.
Can we put this off till next time?
No.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. The Legacy Farms North bus stop issue, we're going to save till later because John Westerling is not able to be here until later. Zero Princeton Road discussion, take us away, John.
So, there is, in a butter to Zero Princeton Road, so that is town-owned land and they would like to acquire it from the town. And the Assistant Town Manager has asked boards to weigh in and if there's any plans that anyone knows of for that property that the town wants to use it for, to let her know or let me know and give any other comments to either of us.
So, this invitation for boards and committees to comment goes far and wide. To all boards and committees, departments?
It's to get an understanding as to if there were any plans that the town had or any boards had for that land.
Do you know, does anybody know of any particular interest in that parcel?
It looks landlocked, right? It doesn't have frontage on a road.
Yeah, well, it has one on a paper street.
A paper street.
I thought it was kind of interesting because it was near the lake.
It is, yeah.
So, I thought, I thought potentially to give it up would be giving some recreation usage out of it, whether a small recreation center or, you know, a field for that neighborhood or for the local, for that, you know, local group. That potentially that could be something the town might use it for, but that's just my thought.
Through the chair to kind of follow up on that. I mean, we've been spending a lot of money buying property for the town and certain commissions that they can't be built on. I was just wondering why we'd go with the policy of starting to sell town land.
So...
Set the music.
I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily know the answer to that question. I do know that when there is a piece of property that is open and hasn't been utilized and a butters are interested in it, it's a common process to, you know, specifically ask all boards and committees if there is any reason that the town would be specifically interested in retaining rights to the property. So, I don't know that, I don't know anything about it and I don't know any reason why we would have an opinion on not selling it to the butter, but I'm just asking others if they know.
Yeah, just to follow up, I'd like to keep it as open space.
So, you are not on Open Space Committee, right?
No.
Yeah, so I presume that Open Space is talking about this? But we can, what, do you know, is there a timeline?
I haven't heard of it.
So, I mean, I, we could certainly ask for that input before we make a determination. I don't know anything about the property, so I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, thanks.
Do we have any more history on how long the town has owned it? If there is any intended use or-
I don't have any.
It does say it here that it was taken in 1978 because of back taxes.
Yeah.
This is basically just a letter that was issued to you guys through me?
So, if I'm under, is everybody amenable to, Mary?
I just had, again, a question.
Yeah.
And that was whether or not it, because it appears to give access to other parcels of town land.
Yeah.
And that are fronted on a paper street. And so, by giving that up, we might not be able to reach those other town parcels. And that's, that's just a clarification question more than anything, is whether or not that would give us a problem.
So, I'm fine with asking John to research that and make sure we have that piece of information and also find out if and when Open Space is considering the question so that we can get their, their determination? Anybody else?
Yep.
As we've done some similar research in the past, we call it due diligence, so, well, John will get that done for us.
Okay.
Can I ask more, just on the drawings that were included? Is every lot that's listed as town, is that, are those all town-owned?
I assume town-owned, that was what I assumed. What, why else, I, I don't know why.
I'm assuming that, I'm just surprised at how many parcels-
Boom, boom, boom.
I know.
Yeah.
I just, I'm surprised at how many parcels there are that are owned by the town over there, considering it's kind of a-
It's interesting, yeah. So, I guess we would like some more information. I don't think that we would necessarily leave the charge on purchasing it, but we might at least-
Yale Road down here.
Yes, or selling it, we might at least support other boards and committees without someone applying.
Although I don't know.
Is there any, through the chair, is there any street that we could relate to for this topic?
So, there are lots of times, I, I'm not familiar with any particular, I know there's history and probably Elaine would be a great person to ask or Mike Shepherd in Town Hall if you had a few minutes, for sure. I know that we have very often sold off little, like, slivers of land that had joined properties, like that happened for the Kissners right there next to the mobile that will now be that big gigantic, couldn't live without it, mobile. And, you know, the town just didn't have any use for that little sliver of property. But we held on to it until we did the lumber street extension improvements into Elmwood Park, just in case we needed it, kind of thing. I don't know about big pieces like that, to be honest. But, you know, Elaine or Mike Shepherd would be great people to start with as far as the history and-
Personally, we'd be inclined for the town to keep it because it connects to the other town-owned parcels.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good point.
Yeah, and I also think that it's because of the, sort of, the regulation of that area that it provides, as we are talking, open space, although that's not our jurisdiction. I just think that more green down in that area provides, you know, a nicer environment and perhaps, you know, potential recreation space.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll get more information on that in a j-
To answer your question in terms of timing, I mean, is the ultimate timing of town meeting?
Oh, right, right, it has to be a town meeting vote anyway, so we do have plenty of time. So, let's, let's get a little bit more feedback from people, thank you. Okay. Discussion on future planning board meeting locations. Apparently, we are not being good neighbors here, in the parking lot, that is.
It's been recommended that we move. And Kobe and I checked out the library. The large meeting space is available and very nice and air-conditioned. So, to kind of jump on that opportunity before everyone else does, I didn't know if you wanted to start scheduling meetings starting in September at that location or the other option is the H-Cam Studios, but there's been some opposition to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I am very amenable to using the library. I'm not as amenable to the H-Cam Studios for my own personal reasons, just because it makes me cough. But I would like to, if we choose the library, we should say each time as we schedule new meetings and as we close meetings that the reason we are moving is to try and encourage people not to park where we're not welcome to park in the Bills parking lot and to perhaps use St. John's or the side streets or street parking at the library. I worry a little bit being so co-located to this parking lot that we won't solve our problem, but I'm happy to try the library.
I think that's a good idea. It would be the church space, the old church, right? The large room with I T S.
That large room, yeah.
Would be nice.
Okay.
I'm very happy to do that, so why don't we, why don't we try the library and see if it solves our, our parking problem?
And it's not just the parking, because they're going to be fixing the elevator as well.
Oh, that's right.
So, we're going to have to move out of Town Hall except for the basement.
My apologies.
So, it's kind of likely moving to a permanent location.
Can H-Cam broadcast live from the library?
I've been told they can, yes.
Excellent.
Okay.
I saw scheduled the September 9th meeting for the library.
For the library, yeah. How long is the, the meeting rooms, other than the basement, going to be out of commission in Town Hall?
We don't know yet.
What is the select board doing?
Okay, so we are going to be meeting on, our next meeting is September 9th and we're going to test-drive the big meeting space at the library, which I'm kind of excited about, I'm not going to lie. Okay. You have to come to the mic and you may.
When you refer to the large meeting room, are you referring to the former church?
Yes.
Where they have the church windows and-
Yeah.
The religious sense. I just wonder if there might be some people offended at going there who are not Christian?
Thank you, yeah. Is there, I haven't even-
If there is a Christian sculpture on top of that building.
Thank you. It's worth thinking about, for sure.
Through the chair, one thing to note is I haven't scheduled with the library yet, so this may not go through, but I'll confirm with the library.
How do people feel about the setting? For me, it was going to be lovely, but I get it, not for everybody.
I thought we were aiming for the new function hall that was-
That's not the big meeting room though, and we need a big space, right?
I don't know what the function hall is.
I think that's what we're talking about, isn't it?
We did, is it in the old, is the big meeting space-
If you walk into the entrance of the library, take the left and then it's basically to the left.
Can we meet past the library hours in that?
So, they've extended the library hours?
Not till 10 o'clock, though.
Yes, closes at night.
So, they told us that if we meet there, we would have to be responsible for the space after hours and they would have to basically lock off everything but that access.
And then when we leave, we would, it would lock behind us, I guess?
Yes.
I think it's a valid concern about the religion, but I think it would be okay to try it and solicit feedback from the community if that's an issue.
I think it's been a library space for so long that I would wager a guess it's not concentrated anymore. So, that would be kind of, that would be kind of interesting to look into that aspect too, the historical aspect. So that if anybody had a problem with it, that could be confirmed that it's been a library for a really long time.
I'm, I'm amenable to staying and then if we feel like we need to move, we can move. We'll try it the first time, September 9th, if it's available. If it's not available, will we try for the senior center?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right.
So, I just got a, I mean, as I think about this?
Yes, no, definitely.
We, we have this meeting room, we have this beautiful desk, we have H-Cam here, we have space for the public to join in. And if the only reason is that we can't park in the Bills parking lot-
It's for the next couple of months, we don't, we aren't going to be accessible.
So, this is-
We're going to have to do, we're going to have to move anyway.
Okay.
There's no elevator, so we have to invite everyone?
We might, we might, to your point, elect to move back and encourage our attendees to not utilize the parking space next to us.
Or if they do have a slice of pizza.
Or bring your pizza. All right, so, for the Sept-, hold on, September 9th, we are going to try the library if it's available. Okay, yes.
For those viewing at home, there is an issue with H-Cam where there, when we come for our meetings, they have the cleaning crews there, cleaning crews have their supplies in the elevator and the elevator is the only way to get down into the meeting space because the stairwell doors are locked. So, we're exposed to the fresh, strong cleaning supplies, which actually does bother my eyes a bit and bothers some other members of this board more seriously. So, either we can get them to do their cleaning at another time or get them to unlock the door for us to walk down, but still, it's, it's questionable as far as-
So, can we just treat it as a temporary pilot and see how it goes? Because I mean, to the points made earlier, we have to go someplace.
Yeah, I'm glad to try the library, it's a town building and-
Awesome. September 9th, at the library.
I just checked the library calendar and it is currently not booked, but if we act quickly.
Yeah, particularly as the meeting spaces here are not available. Some of the spaces, it's going to be, they're going to be on the premium. Okay, last, last administrative piece is approval of the minutes of July 8th. Anybody have any, anybody willing to move that?
No one's willing to move that.
Second.
All those, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, all right. So, that is the administrative agenda that we can do at this moment. I am going to ask the applicants for the Whisper Way project to come up, come forward. So, in fairness to everybody, because we're test-driving this new approach, I want to let you know that I've allocated thirty minutes approximately to this. So, we hope to be able to get through the, you know, detailed but quick introduction and really get into what you need from us tonight. And if we can't do it in thirty minutes, you are welcome to stay as we have time at the end. If we have time at the end, we will go back to it. Okay?
Through the chair.
Yes.
There's a procedural issue where they need to withdraw, they just need to vote on the withdrawal and then the resubmission.
Okay, thank you. So, do you need to request, do they need to-
They were requested, so the request is before the board.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is vote on the request to withdraw the application that was before us for the, the amendment to the special permit concept plan and the definitive subdivision plan. And this is being done specifically so that we can re-include more voting members of the board. So, I'll entertain that motion.
I'm allowed to withdraw, I mean, accept the withdrawal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any comments?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Does the math work the same way where we're now down one member?
It doesn't work exactly the same way, we're down one member, but it's, but that brings everybody back on. So, Robert, for example, couldn't vote, I think that you weren't able to vote anymore. I'm not sure about anybody else, but it does bring the existing full board back-
Okay.
Into the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, and then, now, we can entertain the new filing. And so, because we're doing it this way as sort of an administrative vehicle, so the applicant will give us a quick, detailed overview to bring everybody up to speed, Robert in particular, who hasn't necessarily been here for the hearings, and then hopefully we can get to the meat of this, the subject matter that we need to finish for you today.
Ron Nation, great reward LLC, Larry Green here is the state architect. And I'd like to have Larry kind of show us around the site, best he can.
Show us around the site, Larry.
So, good evening, Larry Green, WDA. I'm just going to take a second and just quickly describe the property and then just give a quick overall, you know, landscape, just kind of like holistically.
Yeah.
And then, and then Liz, the engineer, can talk kind of the infrastructure. So, this property is approximately forty acres in size and in, and after reviewing my notes on this property, I was kind of struck by the uniqueness of this property, of the undulated topography, the glacial erratics, the, you know, the granite outcrops, the variety of the topography, the variety of the plant material, you have white oak groves, you have beech groves, just a unique piece of property. Also, within this property, you know, it had an existing trail system and it also had a, you know, it's a butt town-owned land that has a trail next to it. So, you know, this property almost lends itself to an open space development to, you know, basically the intent is preserve, preserve landscape features, preserve significant features such as these outcrops, such as these significant trees. So, you know, the plan we have before you is basically this open space subdivision, we're really trying to preserve the landscape, you know, in that, in meeting that intent of, we're proposing the road per only in the same quarter that the existing road is in to preserve, preserve trees, preserve earth disturbance. We're also incorporating common driveways, again, to minimize earth disturbance, to minimize tree clearing. So, when people come home, it's, you know, not to sound corny, but it's the, it's their oasis. You know, even the idea of incorporating a shared septic system, so again, allows the, the whole, allows the opportunity of minimizing land clearing around the house. So, it's just got to, really trying to place the house within the landscape. You know, and even the, the open space itself, you know, this property is approximately forty acres in size, so this, you know, the open space would be approximately twenty acres. But that twenty acres actually have butts, you know, over two hundred acres of town-owned land. So, incorporating this open space, you know, in this one area, you could have approximately two hundred and seventy-five acres of town-owned land. So, you guys have the opportunity of land preservation and a trail network or lab writing that trail next to it. You guys have an opportunity to do, you know, something really neat or just preserve land. So, I just feel like the plan before you is really, we really tried to meet the intent of the open space bylaw by preserving landscape features. Two seconds.
Appreciate that. I would also like to say that, that it, the challenges lend itself to sort of a longer-than-typical list of needed waivers and they all have their arguments and justifications for why they're needed and how they help limit some of the land clearing, for example, changing the place, where the existing road is to limit what had, the work that has to be done and the clearing that has to be done on the site, so. Did you want to say anything else as we start?
No, I don't think so, I think Larry got it pretty good. I think we've come a long way on the, on the details with, with faith, with fill. And I'm just hoping we can make some real progress. We've, we've been lasted so long time and hoping that we can keep a full board and just, just keep it as positive as possible.
I agree, okay. John, give us your, your update or your-
So, it is substantially similar to the previous design, it's a twelve-lot subdivision. There's ten lots- There's ten lots in the cluster off of the Whisper Way cul-de-sac and then two lots coming from a common drive connected to Wood Street. And then there's the open space surrounding those lots. They've requested many of the same waivers as before, all of which except for two were granted. One of them was denied, that was for the frontage depth. They have revised the plan so that now only two lots require a waiver for frontage depth, before it was eight. So they've fixed the frontage depth issue on six lots. And they've, some other changes that I don't believe were in the previous iteration were removing the stub connecting the adjacent lots, so the, the one at the bottom, oh, that's an old plan. So that stub is gone. And the, nope.
Nope, down at the bottom.
The two pieces from Wood Street, that stub is gone.
Correct. There's an easement, there's a revised plan. Is that, is that the revised plan, just showing an easement?
That is not the revised plan, but it's extremely subtle. But yes, it was, the piece, the parcel was removed.
Is this the revised plan that shows the lots as they are that don't need the frontage depths? That need the frontage depths?
I think it's, I assume that's in the package, in the, in the definitive application.
This rendered plan is not the one that shows up, but it's.
That is not.
Frontage depth is in the plan set.
And so, so the stub on the, on the definitive plan, we've got it as an easement, as a, as a possible utility easement, underground utility easement. And just for discussion with the board, if that works, fine, if not, then.
There you go. So I just happened to have the lot, the lot slide that shows the lot depths. That plan is the updated plan showing the lot depths.
What page is that?
Oh gosh, you're asking the wrong, not very technically savvy person.
It is sheet nine of the plan set.
Okay, that's page fifty-nine of our package.
Thank you so much. So that is the most up-to-date plan.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I don't know if this is relevant right now, but I was just going to ask about, you know, the loop versus, versus the cul-de-sac.
Um.
Basically about the street, so.
Yeah, go ahead and ask about the street.
So my, my question, and this is really as a chance to address this, because I think it's, you know, it, it's on people's minds of why doing a loop, just with the pavement that you are showing right now, including the driveways, you know, both coming from, from both directions and the cul-de-sac, why you couldn't just continue that street and make it a loop road? It was the wetlands.
The, coming across, having a loop road, kind of, so, well, the loop road is three thousand five hundred feet long and the cul-de-sac is five hundred feet long.
I understand, but there's a lot of driveway in there too.
There are.
Yeah.
There are, but then now each one serves two miles.
Okay.
So the loop road came around, looped around, and came up back through here.
Yeah.
The DEP decided that they didn't, at the, I don't know, like the eleven hour, they decided that they didn't want to see stormwater within the buffer zone for the thermal pool. So in order to make that, this road work and have the water not in the thermal pool area, we'd have to build the road up from Wood Street, you, whatever the leveling area is, and then, and then climb up to ten percent, eight percent, whatever the maximum allowable grade is, in order to send as much water as we possibly could back to this area, out of the thermal pool area. So that road would be, would be about fifteen feet above existing grade and there'd be retaining walls on either side of it.
Okay.
To get the water to go back, to go back to this area.
Okay.
So it just, it just became totally impractical, very expensive, not very attractive.
So, so wetlands and, and there's, you know, some preservation of some open space, a little less pavement, although it, you know, even though theoretically, just on paper, it looks like all you have to do is put a little bit more pavement between those two lots and you've got a loop road. But you're just saying that in reality, the topography doesn't make that practical.
Well, the topography wasn't, there's a whole, there's a whole range of things that make it impractical.
Okay.
But it, it can be done, but it's, it would be extremely expensive.
Okay.
And we didn't do, we didn't do any of the numbers for how much paving is versus the road, the loop road, in twenty-four house lots, you know, individual driveways. But I'm quite certain that there'd be quite a bit more paving, you know, even though, I mean, some of the, some of the driveways would be long as it is even off the, off the loop road, so.
All right.
Chair.
Yes.
Just on that theme, Mr. Nation, can you, so what happens to all that water when there's a paved driveway in that same spot?
About here?
Yes.
There's, there's maybe, I think there's.
And I guess how is that different from the road design?
The driveways are, do not need to be treated to the same level as the roadways do. Obviously, there's a lot more traffic on a roadway, there's salting and things that, there's just a whole bunch of regulations that apply to, to the roadway and the stormwater that has to be done for that. That doesn't, is, just doesn't apply to a lot or a common driveway.
So just in a practical sense, what happens to all that water that we're trying to avoid going into the protected areas now that it's a driveway instead of a road?
So the conservation, as, as we permit each individual lot, Conservation Commission will take a look at each of those. They may require specific drainage pieces for each individual lot and get permitted in that, in that fashion. It's allowable through the Conservation Commission.
So the water just runs into that protected space that you're trying to avoid doing if there was a road there?
It's not exactly, so there's, it's a complicated site, the, there is an existing, there's existing pavement there that currently goes into that protected space. There's existing Whisper Way on the other side that's gravel and has complete discharge into the, into the thermal pool right now. So if the commission's looking at it holistically, it's an improvement for the site and it's an improvement to that, to that area. We're doing additional, there's invasive species there that we're going to clean up as part of this project. So while it, it could potentially get discharged untreated, it's unlikely that the commission will allow that and if, and even if they don't do anything in the lot, when we do the individual lots, they are already increasing the protective, the protective areas around the thermal pool with this submission for the commission's requiring us to do a certain amount of, and I, and I can't speak as well as the wetland scientists can to the commission, but they're doing things to improve the area and the protections to that thermal pool as part of the conservation filing for the, for the whole subdivision.
I'm going to ask Phil if he would come forward and just run through, I know you've done a lot of work on this and there aren't too many open issues, but I think that there are a couple or maybe not. And I thought, I thought that there still were a couple.
So again, for the record, my name is Phil Paritas with Beta Group. We've been tasked with reviewing this for the, for the town. And Ron is correct and Elizabeth and Dan have worked on many nights on this project and have come a long way. And so we, we just have probably just a handful of issues that we, every, it seems like every step of this project either raised another issue or whatever. So, so as, 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 so the latest issue that we're, we're still working with is the driveways. There's significant long driveways and undulating topography. So, and they've, they've developed some profiles and sections and, so there's, there's some aspects of it that may cause drainage changes. They've added some, at least indications that they're going to put in some culverts. So we need some more details on that. We also want to make sure that the fire department is, is, is able to turn around on some of these long driveways and come back. So we, we would like to see that, that turning plan. And then there's some minor things like a one M plan, we just want to make sure that the, the site distances on Wood Street are, you know, protected and then map. And then there's, there's just a culvert issue that I think we need just, just a technical meeting on probably to make sure we can agree that it conveys the fifty-year storm event across the road, so. And there's a few conditions we'd expect to include. When we get to that, we can let you know.
You had also in your notes that it, the SW twenty-four you indicated was a subject that we should probably discuss and decide. SW twenty-four, which, you know, I should have taken better notes at what that was.
Oh, yes. Yeah, this, as, as we've learned the hard way on a few of our projects here, that, you know, challenging sites and soils, conditions that are not amenable to, to rapid infiltration are likely to cause challenges with erosion and sedimentation. So we just, we, we recommend that there be more, look into that to make sure that, you know, only certain sections of the, you know, what happened, what happened in some of these other projects is they come in and clear the whole, the whole parcel.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's, it's catch-up after that. So we recommend that they put in their roads and then as they build each individual lot, that they, just so they don't have to manage so much sediment.
Okay, so do, sort of plan it out one at a time individually?
Yeah, or maybe a couple, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But not, not the whole, the whole.
You're not going to be unreasonable.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, yeah, obviously it's a, it's a business and you want to be able to, you know, work on one and, and, you know, progress, so.
Okay.
But I think there, there should be some more thought that goes into that.
Okay. And I apologize if you said it and I was checking my notes and I didn't hear it. Is there an open recommendation that we get, the sewer septic plan?
So that's going to have to be, so they've, they've, I think they've kept all the sewer out of the right of way.
Okay.
And so that's what the, the sewer superintendent was concerned about.
Okay.
That he would have to manage it. It's, it's a private system, it's going to have to be reviewed by the Board of Health. If they, if they, they want us to help, help review that, we can.
Okay, but it's not an open issue as long as they keep everything out of the right of way?
Right. If the town's not going to maintain it or have to, you know, it's not going to be.
Be careful about it or?
Right.
Okay. All right. So we have two waivers that are, are open.
So all waivers need to be revoked.
Right. Right. But what are the two that we didn't approve?
So the one was the frontage depth.
Yep.
And the other was?
Buffer.
Yes.
Oh, the buffer because of the spurt.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Yeah, just to note, I made a few mistakes in the waiver section of mine, so for instance, I don't think we need.
Go ahead.
Waiver seven is incorrect and they, they've already added number eleven, so I think I referred to it somewhere else too, but they've already asked for that, requested it, so.
So just for a point of clarification, the waivers that are listed in the memo are the current ones from GEAR. The comments were not received from Beta because they were working on them.
Yeah.
So I just kind of slipped in their previous comments, which would be a little confusing.
Talk to me about what page I'm looking at.
Of the memo, it is page eight.
Thank you.
So the waivers themselves are correct, the comments may be outdated.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so do, first of all, I'm going to ask for comments from the public, which is something we do at every public hearing. We have never had the public comment on this, but I want to just see if anybody came from the public to comment on the Whisper Way proposed plans. Okay, seeing none, we're going to just move past that. Do, so board members recognize that we are looking at a slightly modified plan that attempts to address the concerns the board had the last time we were voting this and it's a brand new plan, so we aren't reconsidering necessarily the waivers, we don't have to reopen a vote, we're voting them all again fresh. But many of them we have satisfied ourselves about and there are no changes to those.
I believe so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments? And I'll start with Robert.
The, just at a high level of all the, all the waivers requested?
Mm-hmm.
The lot depth frontage, is it just not possible? Or is it possible and it's impractical or too expensive? What is the rationale?
I bet Ron could speak to that if you wanted to.
So the lot depths, the box can, can be done on every lot. But when we get into doing it, there's one, there's one shown for every lot. But when we get into this, this area right in here, it's on the inside, it's on the inside radius and they just, they just start packing in. And you also have to get a driveway beyond, so, so this driveway has to, has to go beyond this box. It just, it just makes them irregular shapes in here for the normal use of the, of the frontage and driveways. And I know I'm not explaining very well, but it's a. So we've got this box here that pushes this property line out into the usable area for this lot. So that's, five and six are, five and six are the ones we're looking for. So this, so this box pushes, pushes this property line out, pushes this driveway over this way, this one pushes this driveway over that way and it just gets this house into a, into a bad spot. It just tightens everything up. And without that, without the box, for five and six, we have just something more, you know, more workable. The driveway isn't close to a house, everything is packed, packed right in, close up to this house. It's.
A point of clarification through the chair?
Hold on one second, I'm going to let Robert finish.
I'll share.
Okay, so my question right now.
Yeah, go ahead Frank.
Mr. Nation is, I believe is saying that the initial plan meets the depth, but by moving things creatively and then what they're, what they're asking for, it's to, it's better layout the way they're asking for at the expense of one houses being, depth being shorter, nearer the street.
Two, two.
Five or six.
Yeah. And the, the frontage for those houses is not short, the frontage is, is still the required frontage. It's just, it's the shape. It's just that it's the shape.
The kind of spoon.
So the shape, we don't have that... We don't have that shape for the front of these two lots. But the houses aren't up here. The houses are going to be back there.
Another point that I think is important to consider, that if the developer was creating the road brand-new fresh, he wouldn't be facing these constraints because he developed that spine road, that spur road, in a way that worked better for him in this development. But in order to avoid redeveloping that road and, you know, disturbing more of the site, it's doing the best you can with the least disruption, I think, is important to think about.
Yeah. It's... Then all this frontage here is, you know, right up against the town and this frontage is limited. But it's 40 acres and there are 12 house lots.
So I'm just doing a time check. We have five minutes before we, you know, ask you to wait until we can come back to you, so I'd like to get around with the board if we can to just see if there are any...
I just... Yeah, I had a question for the landscape architect. You talked about great groves of trees and very interesting granite outcroppings, and I'm just wondering, how does this new plan preserve that?
Basically, by maintaining the existing roadway and also by placing the houses not in these significant topographic relief areas. You know, through here, there's significant topographies that we try to place the house to preserve these.
Can you show me specifically where those outcroppings and where those groves of birch and beech are?
So there's significant outcrops through here, through the open space itself. Kind of over in here, there's a lot of... In the open space itself, we preserve a lot of that existing vegetation.
How are you going to do that within the 40-acre development? How are you going to preserve some of those areas? The significant tree growth?
Basically, once we've, you know, as we position ourselves away from them, and then if then when we get into construction, then I imagine I'll be commissioned to basically flag those trees for preservation so the tree guy knows not to cut them down.
And outcropping as well?
Yeah, some of the ledge outcropping. You just don't want it to work in them anyways. It's just incredibly expensive and...
Can you show me where they are?
So here, one top in the open space itself.
Yeah, I'm talking more about the area of construction.
There's one outcropping right here that's pretty sharp. It's... They're mostly... There's another one here, here, here. We can tuck the houses up to...
Yeah.
And just let's stay away from them. They'll be featured in the backyard of the house.
Okay.
And they've got giant oak trees poking out of them.
Right.
It's... There's nothing else like this in Arlington with houses being sprinkled around. But, you know, the septic system will be down here, so we don't have to... Usually when you see these... Now, when we build houses now, the way the Board of Health regulations are, the groundwater is always at two feet or three feet or four feet, and the septic system is huge. And you have to cut every tree, and we just won't have that here.
That's really nice. I actually think that's a great effort that you're putting forward. But I do have some questions. Okay, so we're preserving the outcroppings, we're preserving some of the cool trees?
We have talked about this for a long, long, long time. I just want to make sure that your questions are really targeted and...
Okay, I have to finish my sentence. So again, I guess I'm wondering, with the wetlands, how is that going? How are the locations of the houses going to affect the wetlands? Are they going to be tilted enough or...
Well, we're outside of the buffer zone on all... With all of the houses. All of the houses, but maybe this existing house lot four. And that one's right on the edge of the... So the wetland buffer zone is... And here is an existing house. The wetland buffer zone is basically here. A lot of houses are down this way.
Okay, okay.
They're, for the most part, out of the buffer zone. We do have driveways. These driveways here go through a buffer zone. Or this driveway goes through a buffer zone. But the houses themselves are high and dry.
That was my question. Okay, thanks. Amy?
I think all my questions have been answered since we reviewed this a few times and with the other comments.
Just to follow up on Rob's question. If you were to comply with all of the lot frontage depth requirements for the lots, how many homes could you build?
Same number.
What's that?
Same number.
Same number?
Yeah. Yeah. But it's, again, it's this... So this box pushes this...
Yep, I get it.
It just keeps tightening things up.
Yep, I got it. But you can comply with the lot frontage depth requirement and still build 12 homes on it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good. I appreciate the attention and level of detail they always present.
Mary? I'm fine. Dave?
So a question on the driveway lengths. So is there a maximum and there's no maximum?
So there has been, just as a kind of side comment, the fire chief and I have discussed casually about establishing a length, not a maximum length, but a threshold where then after that, they would recommend sprinklering the houses. But there is no requirement for that. There is no maximum driveway length.
And I believe he is sprinkling in the house, right?
I don't know.
Are you putting sprinklers in the house?
I'm sorry.
Are you putting sprinklers in the houses or...
I've agreed with the fire chief to sprinkle some... Well, actually, four of the houses. So it'd be these two here and these two here. And those driveways are over 500 feet long. You can see this turnout here. So there has to be a turnout every 500 feet. And so that's shown here. I'm not sure. I think this one is right here, just to get pink in. And that's kind of like the old Wood Street. The original Wood Street.
The fire chief is here. Did you want to say something? Want to throw in?
Sure. So in the review, I was happy with the end product with the four driveways that were developed. The... If I see this plan right, the one additional piece, the two lots that were kind of outside of what I saw to review before, my eyes are telling me they would fit into that same theory that we would add two into the sprinkled solution, so I haven't talked that through with Ron, but just from what I'm seeing on the go here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we had agreed to two. Well, we hadn't talked about the other two, the chief and I, because those are going to be in our lives.
Okay.
So these got full bathroom, so, yeah, of course, I know he's going to pull me...
He's going to like sprinklers for sure. Yeah, right, that's never a bad thing. Okay.
So perhaps the fire chief should have stayed up there.
Oh, fire chief, I'm sorry.
But is there a... Is there a concern with these long driveways as far as non-fire emergency vehicles getting up there, like an ambulance or such?
So the plan that I looked, reviewed, demonstrated that the vehicles could travel the driveways. On the fire side, a long driveway challenges us if we're putting a supply line in for water or something like that. Getting more equipment in there becomes a challenge. So for an ambulance, I'm comfortable that the ambulance can access the residents with the longer driveway. They've done some efforts. The whole package had to do with like lighting out front or seeing the address good and, you know, so on the fire side where the supply line might get in or getting additional equipment in, the sprinkler system helps, and he could still demonstrate on the driveways that through a different turning scheme, that we could still turn around in there with the common driveways. So there was a little bit of compromise back and forth. That answers your...
Yes, thank you. And just one more question for Ron. I believe, John, that the minimum frontage is 100 feet for this?
Uh, I don't know.
I think I just was looking because it's agricultural. Would you know, Ron, agricultural open space?
I believe it is.
So all of the lots meet the frontage?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to have to suspend the conversation, but I'm going to ask the board for a commitment that before we leave tonight, we vote the waivers so that we know those firmly, okay? And you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to, you know, not, but...
Sorry, Mira, I couldn't hear you. We do... What were the waivers?
I'd like to commit to address the waivers.
Address what, to vote on them?
Yeah, so that they know exactly where we stand on the waivers before we leave tonight. But I do have to move on to our phone call at 8:30, which is waiting for us, I'm sure. So just so the board knows, we have one applicant for the Growth Study Committee that is traveling and working and calling in. We're going to... We're committed to taking his call first, but we're going to talk about the process when he's on the line.
Hi, Dave. This is John Gelsitch, and you are on with the planning board.
Thanks, John.
Let me know if you can't hear anybody.
Dave, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, so we do not hear you very well. I just saw two hands go up in the back with an exasperated look. We're working on the volume.
All right, how about now? Dave, can you say something?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, can you hear me now? Yep, thank you. Okay, perfect. I appreciate everybody's patience. So just so everybody knows, I think the applicants for the Growth Study Committee are entering now. I believe everybody is here. One applicant, Dave Wheeler from Blueberry Lane, was not able to be here in person, so we have arranged to have him join us by phone call. Amy and I worked a little bit... Both she and I are on the Growth Study Committee. We worked a little bit on process. So Dave, we're just going to talk with the board for a couple of minutes to make sure the board members here are agreeable to the process we have... We are proposing, and then we will hear your comments after that.
Great.
Okay, so what... Because we have seven applicants for four potential spots, there are two spots on the committee proper voting slots and also two alternate slots. Those members are welcome to vote if they are helping solve any quorum issues, if they're there when a regular member is not. But as a rule, the alternates would be fully participating members, just not necessarily... Not voting members. We... Because we have seven people interested in four spots, we would like to propose that after we... We're going to invite each of the applicants to give us a short synopsis about themselves and why they would like to serve and what they think they would bring to the committee, hoping everybody stays around the two- or three-minute mark. And then the board, the planning board, would vote... Each member would vote their top four choices. There would not be any secret votes. The ballots that we have created have the member, the planning board members, a space for their name. Everybody needs to be able to access how the planning board members vote. And then we hope that the first vote carries the day, and each person that is appointed has at least a majority of the members, the planning board members, voting. So our intention is that everybody who is appointed will have at least five votes, which may necessitate multiple rounds of voting. Did I do okay explaining that? So does anybody have any issues, questions, or thoughts on that?
I just wanted to add that, so we would have to do a runoff if there were not candidates, enough candidates getting a majority, or if there were a tie, we'd have to do a second round of voting, so.
Yeah, that's true.
So just one point of clarification.
Yes.
If we do a vote-off...
Yes.
Would we still all be voting on the original members or are we only voting on those candidates that are in the vote-off?
So I think it depends. For example, if in the first round of voting, and I welcome thought on this and discussion on this, if in the first round, say, we had two people that had at least five votes, they would be appointees. And then potentially, our next round of voting would contemplate all the other candidates.
I think that's the most efficient way.
Does that sound amenable?
Mm-hmm.
Dave, were you able to hear that process?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. So is that our process that we're going to do? Okay, so that's what we're going to do. So Dave, because you're calling in from work and I believe you have to get back to a meeting?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you're welcome to give us your statement and then stay on the line or not as your professional duties require, okay? And we will let you know one way or the other?
Great, thank you.
So go ahead, Dave Wheeler. Your name and your address and what you'd like to tell us about yourself.
Thank you. My name is David Wheeler. I live at 37 Blueberry Lane. And first of all, I wanted to say thanks for accommodating my travel schedule for work. I really do wish I could have been there in person, but I do appreciate being able to call in and at least participate in this process. I guess I've lived in Hopkinton for around 13 years or so, and I've seen a lot of growth in the town. And I've seen and participated in quite a few town meetings where, you know, there's a lot of discussion around how we should manage that growth, what growth is good for us, what growth is bad for us. And I do think that this growth study is a really great step so that we can start looking at different scenarios and assumptions and choices that we might be able to make and how we might manage that growth to be consistent with our town values, the character that we all love about our town, and keeping it a place where people want to live and raise their kids while still maintaining the services that we provide, but also allowing for that growth to happen. I was quite interested in this committee because I do, on a professional level, I consult to clients around planning applications and planning systems and processes, forecasting scenarios around different sets of assumptions, and really helping my clients to make data-driven decisions about their future and understand the possible implications of those decisions, whether that be financial or, you know, professional growth for people. And I do think that I'd like to bring that data-driven mentality to the town around understanding, you know, the different scenarios that we're looking at and just being very well-informed so that we can make the right decisions for all the constituents in the town. So that's, I guess, my statement. I appreciate your consideration, and I look forward to... If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks so much, Dave. I think that we decided we just don't have time to interact with questions because we have seven candidates. I think that you did a great job with your statement, and I think that you could feel free to rejoin your work commitment or stay on the line if you want to hear other people's statements.
Thanks. I'm going to actually drop off. I do need to get back. Thank you, though.
Yep, take care.
Bye.
So I think that we're just going to... Just because we started at the W's, we're going to go up to Wilson St. Pierre. Are you here?
Yes.
Come on forward. And you were here to hear the outlining?
I was.
So just give us your top level.
Yeah, I'll give the short synopsis I wrote up for John, but my name's Wilson St. Pierre. I'm a roughly seven-year resident of Hopkinton, live on 22 Huckleberry Road. I'm applying for the at-large position on the Growth Study Committee because I believe I have the kind of public and private sector knowledge that can help the team develop a sound plan of action to manage Hopkinton's growth. I started my professional life as an active-duty U.S. Army officer. During my two-year-long combat deployments, I trained and led U.S. and Iraqi soldiers along the Syrian-Iranian borders. I left the Army with an honorable discharge and returned to my native New England in 2009 to get an MBA at Boston College. While there, I worked at a small investment banking firm, building financial models using a mixture of public and private data sources and gained a better appreciation for the needs and challenges of local business owners. After graduating from B.C., I joined... After graduating from B.C., I joined Fidelity Investments, and I'm currently a director there within our Investment Product Group, covering international equity strategies, and contributing to our environmental, social, and governance innovation team. As such, I'm familiar with current debates around responsible growth, place-based investing, and environmental stewardship, as well as some of the funding mechanisms for community development. My wife and I have two young sons and a vested interest in seeing the town manage its future growth effectively. I look forward to an opportunity to join the team. And just two addendums, my primary personal issues about the town that I, the most interested in are obviously the schools, as our sons are four and six, and the I-495 project that's yet to break ground.
You're on Huckleberry?
Yes.
You're not gonna be able to come and go for about ten years.
Right, so those are, those are my primary issues, but I love learning about policy at large, so whatever topics come to mind.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you for your service as well.
Thanks.
Okay, Tim Brennan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Brennan. I live at one fifty-one Spring Street in Hopkinton. I was, I come to you here tonight after having a brief discussion with Chuck Joseph. He had a call I was on, I work for the police department. A little bit about me, I worked at, I couldn't afford college, so I got a job at Bentley College in nineteen eighty-seven, working for the police department. And then I started to get more into working as a police officer there and got more training and more, more rank, and kept working up. And as I did that, I went to school there for free, which was the primary reason I went there. And I got an associate's in business administration there in nineteen ninety-one, and then I got a bachelor's degree in business management in nineteen ninety-four. While I was at Bentley, and I spent fifteen years there, I got really involved in the school, got involved with different boards and departments and training for students, sexual assault training and work-study students and things like that. There were some problems with some fraternities and sororities, and I stepped in on boards to deal with those issues over the years. I really enjoyed getting involved in the academic areas of the college and stepping away from the law enforcement piece of it. By the time I finished my degree, I didn't know what else to do, so I just stayed in law enforcement. I came to Hopkinton seventeen years ago full-time as an employee, and I've been living here for twenty years out on Spring Street. My wife and I built that house, and we're gonna be there three years, and we're there twenty years later. My wife grew up in town on East Main Street. She is a townie, as they call them. She's lived here her whole life, except for once she went away to college. And my mother-in-law gets very involved, as some of you may know, Jane Moran with the town. I recently was able to get onto the day shift, I'm the day shift sergeant, and I heard about this committee, and I thought that I could bring value to the committee, as I've seen tremendous growth over the last twenty years as a resident, but also as a police officer and in the, in the field of public safety for the police department and my brother and sister's sister across the street on the fire department, and the growth that has taken place in both of those areas. I think we're at a point as a town that we have to really study and try to maintain and manage the growth of the town in a way that is healthy for all its residents, and the town is becoming much more diverse than when I started here seventeen years ago. And just to make sure that we don't grow too fast, I've seen towns in the four ninety-five belt that grew really, really fast and had some significant growing pains, and I think we can, we can, as a town, not share those growing pains if we are able to manage this properly. It will be a learning, there'll be a lot of learning, I'm sure, that I will learn on this group as much as anyone else if I'm chosen. But I have three wonderful children, they're at the same age as Dave Wheeler's children. We're very good friends, and there is, there is a point in my life where I'd like to make sure that they can finish out their careers in, in the schools here in a very productive, positive way, and not be crunched in classrooms with fifty people to a classroom and other things that have happened, other towns that have had the growing pains that we could experience if we're not careful. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sundar.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Sundar Sevraman. I'm a resident of Twenty Carriage Road. I've been a resident of Hopkinton since two thousand six December, so this is high time that I contribute towards the town's welfare. So, that's my main pitch for, you know, getting into this Growth Committee. I've seen firsthand the major growth happening in terms of legacy farms and other things happening in the town, and I feel that I can bring some perspective and contribute to a furthering of the growth. Now, professionally, I'm a, I lead a team of data analysts at CVS Health, so I do deal with data on a day-to-day basis. My background is otherwise in technology and engineering. So, I do feel that some strengths can transfer to this role as how we operate from a, you know, process and bringing some rigor into this, into all our deliberations. I also have a management sciences degree from Harvard Extension School, so I can bring in some core strengths, those are my core strengths I can bring in. What I've seen in this town, what took us to this town was the beauty, the landscape, and the running culture, the excising, and it, that's what keeps us going in this town. That's what keeps me going in this town. What I want is for that basic character to stay as is. I think that's what keeps this town what it is, by its very DNA. At the same time, we do want to partner with the, you know, the growth, everything that growth brings in. We've seen, you know, modernity in terms of restaurants and new libraries, libraries coming up, new school, so there is that healthy balance that we need to strike between growth and preserving the basic, you know, DNA of this town. And I think the Growth Study Committee can play a huge role in striking this balance. And I feel that at once I'd like to be part of this, but that's the basic mandate, and it's a, it's a huge responsibility on this committee, and I want to be part of that.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Michelle, Michelle Murdock.
Hi, my name is Michelle Murdock. I live at fifty-three School Street, and I have been a Hopkinton resident since nineteen ninety-four, so I've been here about twenty-five years. Many of you probably know that I was previously, I should say, a writer with the Hopkinton Independent, I'm no longer doing that, and that's part of my motivation for applying. I really like covering government, I've been very involved, and I'd like to contribute now in a different way. During my almost fifteen years with the Independent, I covered primarily Board of Selectmen, but I've also done lots of planning board coverage, budgets, municipal government. I've written about very many issues, and I've not only covered them, but I've lived through some of the stuff that's been happening growth-wise in Hopkinton during that time. In addition to that, I have two volunteer experiences with Hopkinton. I was in, doing the communications for the three-hundredth anniversary committee, which involved a lot of community outreach. I was also the vice chair of the Charter Review Committee, and that, that was fun to do. I mean, some people might have not considered it that, but in a way, it had a lot of the same similar challenges as this committee has. It's seeking input from the community and listening to people, it's being able to clearly communicate what you find out, and there was a lot of data analysis also involved with that as we looked at surrounding towns and the way people were setting up their charters and things like that. So, as I said, I'm looking to stay involved with government. I feel that I have a lot to offer. I feel that I am more familiar with town government than the average resident due to the reporting that I've done over the last fifteen years. And I would consider myself a researcher. I'm great at digging for details and researching facts, and due to my writing skills and what I've been doing, I'm very good at making complicated things easily understood by the average person. So, I think that's another skill set that I bring to the table. And I would also like to say, I mean, people have talked about, you know, growth, too much, too little. I would come into this with no preconceived ideas or opinions either way. I think that the committee is being put in place to sort of look at and see what needs to be done, and there's a lot of fact-finding that's gonna be required. So, I'm, if appointed, I'm looking at this with an open mind and looking forward to seeing what the, what the results show after people do all the research. And in terms of my background, I have a BS in Marketing and Economics from Boston College and an MBA from Suffolk University.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Shahadul.
Hello, my name is Shahadul Manan. I live on two seventy-four Ash Street. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak and considering my application for this role. So, I think it's pretty evident that we are going through a huge growth over the last five years. The number of houses grown over thousand, the number of residents grown over three thousand, and certainly we are seeing the impact across the board on our services, be it on the DPW, on the schools, the class sizes, as well as on fire, police, and all the other areas. So, it is a very critical subject and critical matter for the town's future, so I'm very happy that we are having this thoughtful committee to look into that and assess the situation, as well as come up with recommendations for our future. And I think that's very timely, so thank you all for that. Now, in terms of my qualification, I served at the Appropriations Committee for almost five years now, and I have been involved with the budget at a very detailed level, working with all the service areas, working with all the problems that the growth has brought in, as well as the opportunities. And certainly, the growth has included a lot of new revenues, almost two million per year, which we dearly need to balance the budget and keep up the services. So, it's a complex equation that we need to solve when we are talking about managing the growth. But coming back to my qualification, I've been working with the budget, so I know a lot about how our budget and the growth and all these can be tied together, so I can certainly help and contribute on that with my thought leadership, as well as my data-driven approach. And on the professional side, I've been involved managing large organizations, building out large budgets and strategy plan for Fortune one hundred company organizations. Currently, I serve as the head of digital innovation and data analytics at Partners Healthcare, and manage a large organization and a budget to plan out their analytics roadmap on the engineering and innovation based on healthcare, which I thoroughly enjoy. And I think all these combined, I can bring that town budget experience, as well as my corporate leadership and strategic planning experience to contribute these, to contribute to this committee and add value to it. So, I humbly ask for my candidacy, and on the personal front, I have two kids. My elder one is heading to college, thanks to the Hopkinton Schools. He's been through a very good education, and I'm proud of that, I'm proud of our school. And I have a ten-year-old who's, who has years ahead, and I hope to get the same quality and maintain the same school excellence for her. And that's also very much motivational for me, for this committee and for this work. Now, with my candidacy and my qualification, I want to be completely transparent and also disclose that this afternoon, I learned from the town clerk that I have been reappointed and extended for the position at the Appropriations Committee, which I'm very thankful for. And I also learned that based on the rules, I would not be able to serve as a member-at-large, which ideally would, and of course, would prevent me to serve as a member-at-large. So, as much as I am excited for this membership and excited for the opportunity to contribute in this manner, I would not be able to serve as a member-at-large. But the reason I'm here is to express my interest, to express that I can add value, and to help you understand that this is very dear to me. And having said that, I also want to propose that I think there is an option that you might consider, and it's entirely up to you how you have structured the, this Growth Committee. I think it's an excellent committee structure, but you may consider adding Appropriations Committee liaison to the committee, which would give the opportunity to have a budgetary perspective added to the committee insights and the thought leadership. And provided my colleagues at the Appropriations agreed to nominate me, I could be able to serve through, as a liaison from the committee. And certainly, again, I, I think I bring a lot of value, and I think the budgetary aspect of this is very important, so I would request to consider that aspect as well. And that's, that's pretty much what I want to say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Praveena.
Hi, my name is Praveena. I'm at thirty-six Huckleberry Road. We lived in Hopkinton for almost ten years. My kids were born here, they're growing up here. My oldest is going into middle school, and I have two twins in elementary schools. I, as Hopkinton continues to grow, I have vested interest in making sure that the character and the charm are retained in Hopkinton. I have an engineering background with analytical skills, and I love solving problems. I would like to give back to this great community, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you so much. And that is, that concludes our candidate statements, so we're gonna move on to voting, but this is the perfect time to remind people that if they do not, we, we find ourselves in a position of having a really nice problem to have. We have a lot of really invested, wonderful, capable candidates and not enough spots for them, and there are an awful lot of volunteer opportunities in town. So, if this particular opportunity turns out not to be yours, please, please, please consider another opportunity in town. One that we know is available right now is the Zoning Advisory Committee, a really terrific way to help the planning board and town meeting in the, the long-term planning arc, and it is a perfect committee for people who have a lot of experience, and also a perfect committee for people who don't have a lot of experience, because all perspectives are very, very appreciated and very valuable. So, at least certainly consider the Zoning Advisory Committee if you do not get appointed to the Growth Study Committee, but I know that there are probably a great many other opportunities out there. And I would like to also take this opportunity to thank everybody who put their name in. We sincerely appreciate it. So, with that said, we have the opportunity to vote, and we're gonna vote our top four candidates. If any candidates have five votes or more, they will be able to be appointed, and certainly if we, if everybody, you know, everybody, the top four all had more than five, were done in one vote, and the top vote getter, I think, will, the top vote-getters would be the active members on the committee, and the next two would be the, the alternates on the committee.
Can I just add, everyone has to be sure to put their name on the top of the form because the votes are not secret.
Yes, you have to put your name on there.
And it sounds like from what Shahadul said, that he would not be eligible to accept an at-large seat, so we shouldn't take that into consideration.
Yes, yeah, we should.
Just cross his name out.
No, 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 I thought he meant that...
So, so, tonight, we would not be able to vote for Shahadul Manan because he is a member of the Appropriation Committee. There is a discussion that we might have whether or not we want to add a seat for the Appropriations Committee, and I would also suggest, and probably not tonight, but at, we should also consider a seat for a school committee, because that was brought up at our first meeting. And it is always nice to have an odd number, but I know we, we contemplated pretty thoroughly the size of the committee, so I think it is a, it's a discussion point that we should have time for. So, yes, we cannot appoint Shahadul tonight. We do appreciate that you came, and we appreciate your enthusiasm, and we sure wish we could utilize your expertise directly. That being said... That being said, these meetings, all meetings, are open, and anybody who has enthusiasm and talent to share is welcome to attend, and your input will be considered thoughtfully.
Makes it a little bit tougher, though.
No one said it was going to be easy. Well, look, John, oh, you want to pass it to me? Sure, pass it to me. Here we go.
Do we have a blank one that we could use to tally?
Oh, that's a really great idea, isn't it?
I put one on the screen, so I know these are on.
So if I just tell you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or I wish I'd put another blank one.
We have blank ones over there. I'm going to grab one.
You could...
Yeah.
She's going to read them out loud, I think.
I'm just going to use one of the blank tallies.
Four or just three?
Call up our votes.
Can you use a tally-to-tally?
I'm going to use a tally-to-tally. Thanks, Dave. All right, has everybody voted? Top four, in no particular order. All right.
I have a four-way tie, so I'm good.
Oh, you know, okay. All right. Just, actually, people could take a small break if they want. What's your...
Like Gary could tally while you read or something.
While I read what?
You're going to read them off?
You're going to read them or just do it?
Oh.
You're going to read them off and I'll tally.
Okay. So we have a vote from Michelle Murdock for Tim Brennan and Wilson St. Pierre. Oh, that was Frank.
Was that just three?
Yep.
I thought you said pick top four.
I had a tie with all the rest.
Mary voted for Praveena, Michelle, Sundar, and David. I don't think I have any duplicate names. Dave voted for Michelle, Tim, Wilson, and Dave. Deb voted for Sundar, Tim, Wilson, and Dave. Robert voted for Michelle, Tim, Wilson, and Dave. Amy voted for Praveena, Michelle, Sundar, and Tim. I voted for, Muriel voted for Praveena, Tim, Wilson, and Dave. And Gary voted for Michelle, Sundar, Tim, and Wilson.
Okay. So our first, first place finisher, so Tim Brennan with seven votes.
Okay.
Second place would be a tie with six votes each for Michelle Murdock and Wilson St. Pierre. And then our fourth place would be Dave Wheeler with five. Sundar with four, and Praveena with three.
So we did it in one vote.
Well, we have a tie for second and third.
Okay.
So we've just got to decide who's going to be the at-large and who's the alternate.
So Tim is definitely an at-large, and Dave is definitely an alternate.
Okay. Can we do a voice vote, Michelle and Wilson, for the, thank you for putting that out, for the full member? Is that amenable? Because we have two people who tied with six votes each, Michelle Murdock and Wilson St. Pierre. So if you favor Michelle Murdock for the at-large versus the alternate seat, for the at-large seat for Michelle, go ahead and raise your hand. One, two, three, four. And if you favor Wilson St. Pierre for the at-large seat... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't see you. Thank you. So that makes four. Is that right? No, we have only eight people here, right? So for Wilson St. Pierre, we might as well formalize it. One, one, two, three. Okay. So for the at... No, five to three. Right?
Oh, I just can't see everybody.
I know, I couldn't see everybody either.
Okay.
Am I correct, John? Five to three?
I think it was Katie, Gary, Frank, Mary, and Dave.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes. Okay. All right. So congratulations to Tim and Michelle for the at-large positions, and congratulations and many thanks to Wilson and Dave for the alternate positions. And thank you very much to everybody else who applied, and please do contemplate another opportunity. We'd love to have you working for the town. All right. Nice. Next meeting, all those who have been appointed at-large or alternates have to be sworn in by the town clerk before the meeting, if you would like to vote. We will be organizing at that first meeting and also going over some of the initial action item work that we talked about at our very first meeting. The meeting is Monday night, August 19th, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall basement. All right. I think we did it. Thank you very much.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We've got a lot to get through.
We do.
Do we...
Is going to be a continuance?
Okay, it is?
Yep. So our next item is the continued public hearing for the Wood Street Commercial Photovoltaic Solar Facility, much like the Whisper Way application, but for different reasons. They are requesting to withdraw, so the first thing I'd like to do is entertain the motion, a motion for them to accept their withdrawal.
So move.
Is there any questions or discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I should have said, the reason is, is because their first filing wasn't completely correct, so the next filing is more correct, but essentially exactly the same project. And so we have opened the hearing, and they have requested to continue to September 9th or beyond. What does the agenda look like for September 9th?
So they are already placed on there, I believe. I'll check. It's pretty full, but they already do have a spot.
But we could switch them.
We could. Let me open that up real quick.
Yeah, that would be great.
So September 9th, we have 76 Main, Aspenock Woods, Eversource Pipeline, Eversource Scenic Road, 223 Pond Street, Scenic Road, and Elmwood Farms Amendment to a definitive subdivision plan.
What's our next...
They're actually not on here yet.
What's our second meeting in September?
Twenty-third.
The date, it's going to be the 23rd? I recommend we push them out to the 23rd.
They have a slot. Before we get started again.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion to move, continue the commercial photovoltaic solar facility at Zero Wood Street to September 23rd.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Quick question. Should we be setting a time, like 8:00 o'clock or something?
We're not setting times.
I know they're all starting at the same time.
We're not setting times, yeah. We'll order them up.
But shouldn't we say a time for people to show up?
They have to show up at 7:30.
So we give that as a time?
Yep.
We don't give the beginning of the meeting as a time?
That's the beginning of the meeting, 7:30.
But we don't need to say continue to at 7:30?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
No, because the agenda, the notice tells the start time.
Okay.
Okay. So next on, oh, I'm going to recommend that we go back to, that we entertain John Westernling's two subjects now. Okay. Come on forward, John. We're going to start with the Legacy Farms North bus stop.
Good evening, and thank you very much for entertaining my two items.
You're welcome. So Legacy Farms North, just as a recap, has an issue because it is not an accepted road. It's a very big, formal road that we have invited people to use to offload traffic, and we have a concern with a lot of young children trotting down and queuing up for a bus way at the end. Having seen it in action myself, I have a further concern that because of the dynamics of the bus path that they have to use, in fact, the traffic does not stop on Legacy Farms North when the children are queuing up, so they are whizzing by lines of little teeny kids. And for the complicated, the neighbors have responded by carpooling down there, but there is really no place to put a car safely anywhere down there. I also found that out for myself. So one of the suggestions that we proposed is out of the ordinary, but is finding a way to accept the road with the conditions on the master developer. So it would be a little bit out of the ordinary, and we did ask Mr. Westernling as the DPW Director to weigh in on that idea.
Through the chair, good evening, everyone. That is a highly unusual suggestion, and just my initial reaction is that it would not be in the best interest of the town. There are too many elements of the construction that have yet to be completed, and through that construction process and through the completion of those elements, many other elements can arise that we may not be able to anticipate right now, and that would put the town at great risk for carrying construction costs, contingencies. I just see that as, again, initial reaction is that it would put the town at great risk, and I would recommend against it.
So unless we had a contingency fee, can you tell me what the cost is for, the typical cost for a road like it, once it's accepted to the town to maintain it annually?
Initially, the costs are lower, because we're looking at probably just winter maintenance. But as the road ages, as construction, infrastructure elements start to fail, which they all will over time, in spite of how well they're constructed initially, as the pavement degrades, as potholes show up, the town will have to continue to put more and more effort and time and money into that. But initially, it's fairly low. The biggest cost initially, again, is the winter maintenance.
So ballparking that road?
Couldn't even ballpark it. Sorry.
You can't ballpark a road in town?
Ballpark the cost of...
Snow removal, snow maintenance?
How many storms?
So how do you estimate for the town? You have to estimate that for the town for all your roads.
So we estimate the manpower required and the equipment required.
Yep.
I don't know that that would be an extra piece of equipment, but of course, any piece of equipment that's in that easterly part of Hopkinton would have to take on that additional length of roadway.
Okay. That helps me. Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Question to the chair.
Yeah.
To the chair, will you be plowing that sidewalk? How do you determine which sidewalks to plow and which ones not to plow?
Through the chair, we have a list of roads now that we plow, and those are concentrated around the center of town and the routes to school. We don't have any plans right now to have those sidewalks cleared.
Thank you.
Mary? Since I'm starting this way.
I guess I was just wanted to address the, yes, there's a lot of costs involved, but in terms of just taking it on earlier and then perhaps, is there a way in your mind to have money set aside in a bond or whatever that would address your concerns that you were saying? Because I'm really thinking of the weighing, the issue with the children, and how long it's going to be before the road would qualify in our normal sense of accepting a road. And I, you know, that's a long time in the future, potentially. So is there a way to set aside money to estimate things like that?
So through the chair, I don't foresee how we would accept the road now without town meeting approval.
You can't.
So...
Without meeting approval.
So there's, the next town meeting that I'm aware of is next May.
You can call a special town meeting. That's been proposed.
So my...
That would be the formal mechanism for doing it, but you're correct.
So my recommendation would be to have the developer complete the construction, because there's not a lot left to be done there. There's top course of pavement, there's probably top course of pavement on the sidewalks, there's loom and seed, I think for all intents purposes. The water infrastructure is complete, the sewer infrastructure is complete. Have the developer complete the construction elements to a point where we would typically accept it at a town meeting. And then if we have the annual town meeting next May, or if there's a special, then we can look at that. And then in that situation, because there is a lot of construction activities there, I would recommend that we have some sort of a contingency set aside, because there's lots of heavy equipment up there, and we wouldn't want a brand-new town road to degrade due to the weight and the traffic of that heavy construction equipment.
Totally agree. Thank you. Frank?
I went by, checked out the property, and it's August, and the roadway grass area between the sidewalk and the road is where people park, and it's all torn up quite far bit up the hill. I appreciate Mr. White, let's call you White, the DPW head's comments, and the risk is too great to the town, and I understand that, but we're kind of looking at a number we could attach to that risk, and that's kind of what we're getting at.
Sorry, the chair, would you repeat the question, please?
We're looking for a number we could attach to the risk. We understand that there's a risk.
Twiceless.
We've seen it in the history of the town, smaller developments, but this is a larger development, and there's different issues going on, safety issues, and that we're looking for an answer that we could help. I see the developer is very eager to say.
You have to wait.
So maybe if you guys got on the same page about that, that would be useful to our board.
Through the chair, there's an existing bond for the remaining construction cost. That's a great start of how much is left to be completed there.
But it's just a start.
And then you could add in 20% for unforeseen problems with construction defects that were not caught during inspection, or problems with the infrastructure elements that have degraded over time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one comment. I think we've gotten your input. Thank you. I'm going to suggest we move on, because we have a lot to get through tonight.
Yep, we're going to get to the rest of the board, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, I think I'm glad to have Mr. Westernling's input. I think there are also parallel processes that we could pursue and other options, I hope, but it's good to hear your perspective.
Thank you.
I would concur with that. That's been said.
Nothing else to add. I totally agree with the costs and the risk.
Awesome. So yes, to everybody's point, just to comment, I do think that our efforts here have spurred conversations elsewhere to pursue solutions. I'm happy to say that the town manager, assistant town manager, and the chair of the select board have all sort of weighed in with me in conversation that we would like to find a solution and hope that, you know, something that is a little unusual and different and maybe more challenging isn't necessarily the one we have to land on.
And through the chair, the safety of the children and the parents that are waiting there is of paramount concern, and that needs to be weighed against the risks to the community and the town.
So I will tell you that I have a very strong opinion that two years of knowing that this problem exists, and this is not directed to you, Mr. Westernling, is too long to wait for this town to get invested and concerned for the safety of those kids. And it should have not been us, and it should have been two years ago, when they first brought it forward. But I understand that we have to weigh everything in a balance, but a bunch of little kids and many, many, many more to come over the years is currency I'm not willing to spend. And we need to find a solution. Thank you, though. All right, Scenic Road.
Scenic Road, thank you very much. Through the chair, this is actually a request that came from a resident who travels Fruit Street and Saddle Hill Road very frequently, and there is a sight distance problem when you pull up on Saddle Hill Road to the intersection of Fruit Street, and you look to your left, which would be to the south. There is no visibility whatsoever. which would be to the south, there is no visibility whatsoever. So this is a request because of Fruit Street being a scenic road, request for the removal of nine cherry trees to improve the safety by increasing sight distance to the southwest. No walls are being removed or altered, and the trees are marked with a white X and notices. There are two six-inch cherry trees, two eight-inch cherry trees, one nine-inch cherry tree, one 10-inch cherry tree, one 12-inch cherry tree, and two 15-inch cherry trees. And I provided to the planning board a locust map showing the general location of where those trees are to be removed, and then if, do you all have the photos?
Yes.
So the photo with the number one in the upper right-hand corner, that is the view that you get when you look to your left at that intersection. You can see that the sight distance is blocked when the vehicle is stopped at the intersection. If you creep forward a little further, picture number two shows the adequate sight distance when the vehicle is pulled out into Fruit Street, creating a dangerous situation. The next photo, number three, is that dangerous situation created when you pull out into the intersection to gain adequate sight distance. The DPW vehicle is at the location that had to be stopped at to gain the adequate sight distance seen in picture number two, and the front wheel is about on the intersecting line in the edge of Fruit Street, so a full two feet of the vehicle is out into Fruit Street. And then I had provided also a sketch showing the, it's actually a photograph showing the nine different cherry trees that would be cut, and then the DPW would do a gentle scraping of that slope just to provide sight distance down the roadway.
Anybody have any questions? Yes?
There is definitely a problem there, and it's been there for a while. The road dips, so it's not just the trees, it's not just the earth that's there, it's the way the road dips down, combined with how fast people come over down Fruit Street over the bridge. Either they're following ways, or they're speeding to work, trying to get to train. People drive too fast there. You do have to pull into Fruit Street in order to take a right, and you can't see otherwise. I'm not totally convinced this is the solution, because when the trees are taken down, there's still the issue of people driving too fast, and also the way the streets curve together, and it's kind of like the side of a bowl, you still can't see over the ridge. And you've marked the trees very well, it's very clear what your plan is. I hope it's enough, and I hope that you spoke to the property owner, Brad Finn, Finn?
The budding property owner?
Yes, yes.
I have not yet.
Okay.
I just looked that up, it's not owned by him, it's, it's a small parcel that's not owned by Mr. Finn.
But it's also in the right-of-way that the trees are coming down.
Right, no, I know.
Through the chair, the trees are all town trees within the right-of-way.
And they're right on the road, I mean, definitely.
I gaze at them every day, many times. Mira?
I agree with this for the purpose of safety.
All set for this, but a related but unrelated question after we're done for the DPW.
I got you. Okay. Gary, Amy?
Okay, so this is my point, too.
Yeah.
So the property owner is Rebel Hill LLC, which seems to own the golf course, too. I know that they're in the right-of-way, but it just usually when they take down trees, we ask, could they replace some trees further back from the road? Is that a possibility on this lot? It's very small.
I thought the golf course was on the other side.
It is, but it says it's owned by the same entity.
So through the chair, just so I'm clear, if I'm looking at the locust map, so the request is to replace trees on that southerly side of Fruit Street?
I wish I could show you my-
May I approach?
Yeah, sure, please.
Southerly side, yes.
Yeah, so this is, this is the little sliver where they're on, and it's owned by the same people that own the golf course, apparently.
Mm-hmm.
So is there room further back on that property to put some more trees not in the right-of-way? And would the property owner be willing? I don't know.
Through the chair, I'm happy to have that conversation with the budding property owner, and we can look at whether trees would be the appropriate item or shrubbery of some sort to provide block. But if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like it's only 38 feet. Is that R2190?
Yep.
But there, this is approximately 110 feet worth of tree clearing.
Okay.
So it would, I would look at how many trees are in front of that 38 feet, and how many trees are in the remainder to try to provide a buffer for that house that sits on the corner.
Let me offer this, though, for consideration. Not too long ago, the golf course property on the other side inadvertently allowed for all those trees to be cut down, and it might be something they would consider replacing on that piece of property that they were originally fined substantially for allowing them to be cut down, and then were forgiven those fines. So it might be, that stretch on the other side of the road that used to be the golf course, is its two homes, it would have to be the homeowners, but the golf course might be amenable to helping the town replace some trees in that stretch that's now blank in front of those two homes on the opposite side, more on the side with the golf course.
They cut trees, Madam Chair, across the street from here? They cut trees where those two homes are?
Those two house lots, it was all treed on a scenic road, and those trees came down by a developer that was going to buy the property, that is Chapter 61A protected property, fun fact, and they were down before they noticed the town. And they didn't, they perhaps rightly did not end up paying any fines, but there might be a way that they would be willing to reclaim those trees with the town. It's worth asking. It's worth asking.
Might I suggest one other option, too, is on Saddle Hill Road, on the opposite side of the road, there's big gaps of no trees there, so, I mean, if we do want to plant a couple of trees and we have no place for them, they'd be a perfect spot for them.
Well, I was talking Fruit Street in front of those houses, but he's talking Saddle Hill. I don't know, it's worth asking, and it's worth holding the town as accountable as we hold other people to replant some trees, too, so if it's possible, that would be my preference. Deb?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that no walls are going to get disturbed or changed or altered during this process.
Rob?
Yeah, this street is, I travel every day to and from work, it's definitely, I would call it a high-risk intersection, there's no lights, there's not, people drive it like it's a country road, but it carries a lot of traffic in the morning. I see any improvements to improve safety as good steps forward, and if we can have the right conversations to minimize environmental impacts, all the better.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, I know that you don't walk on water, although you're probably pretty close, but if you wouldn't mind just letting us know through John if there is a possibility to replant some trees and what the possibilities are, that would be very much appreciated.
Through the chair, is the preference to first replace the screening that those trees provided for that house on the corner?
So I actually, I feel like that house is very screened, but I think that they would be the first person to ask if they wanted more trees, since they are essentially losing the trees in front of their, on the edge of their property. Does that, I mean, I think that only seems fair. I wouldn't be surprised if they, I assume, but it's the golf course, right?
Well, there are, I guess some of the trees are on this other property.
Yeah, oh, so if it's the golf course, that translates pretty neatly to either along Saddle Hill on their, along their property, or along Fruit Street along what was their property, if the homeowners even wanted those trees to be planted there. I have no idea. They may love not having trees there, you know?
We empower the DPW, don't we?
I, listen, you're getting a ton of empowerment here, all right? It would be nice to have some trees back if it was possible.
So that I'm clear, Madam Chair, that the preference is on the southerly side of Fruit Street, and if not, across Saddle Hill Road is the second priority?
That's fair enough.
To the east?
Mm-hmm.
Along the golf course?
I mean, that's where there are fewer trees.
Yes, definitely fewer trees, and it's been a few years that they were sort of taken down. It's been-
It has been a few years.
Quite a few years.
There's an Italian saying that said, "Make it nice and nice."
Make it nice and nice. I have no idea, I don't want to send you on a, I mean, I don't think this board wants to send you on a wild goose chase either. If it's possible to do, it would be great. If it's not possible to do, I think we get it.
Through the chair, one traffic question. Yes? Would it be possible to put like a mirror so people could see as they're coming over Fruit Street? If there's someone on Saddle Hill, someone on Saddle Hill could see someone coming over Fruit Street. There is a utility pole there.
Through the chair, the utility companies don't typically allow us to post even a sign on their poles, but we can look at, if that's one of the requests of the planning board, we can look at installing another sign post with a mirror on it.
There's occasionally accidents there, I don't know how deeply it ranks in the top 10, but I think the accidents there are pretty serious enough when you see them that it might help the situation. So yes, if you could get that information, that'd be great.
May I ask my related but unrelated question? It'd be real quick.
Is it part of this public hearing?
Never mind.
No.
It's trees on Fruit Street.
Public hearing, but then, ask your question.
The question was that the further down Fruit Street, trees were tagged very similarly for the utility company removed, and they removed all but the one of the tag trees. I was just curious why they didn't remove the one blue tag tree.
Through the chair, is that one of the blue ribbon trees?
Yeah.
Not blue ribbon as in first place, but there's a blue ribbon tied around it? I can reach out to EverSource and find out why they didn't remove that one.
It was dead like all the rest of them, so, just an FYI. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So for the purposes of approving this request, we need to determine the degree to which the proposed work would adversely affect the scenic and aesthetic values upon which the scenic road designation was originally based. I think we're comfortable that that is not a big issue. The necessity for the proposed work in terms of public safety, welfare, or convenience, that has been the case that has been aptly made. Compensatory action proposed, such as replacement of trees or walls, walls doesn't fall into this. We did talk about trees. I think we have a pretty fair expectation about the probability of getting trees, but it's worth asking. The availability of reasonable alternatives to the proposed work which could reduce or eliminated, eliminate anticipated damage to trees, and there really is not an alternative in this case. And whether the proposed work would compromise or harm other environmental or historical values, I think we're comfortable with that as well.
Did you ask for public comment?
We did not, thank you very much. I will do that, one second, I'm going to read the last condition, consistency of the proposed work with previously adopted town plans and policies. Is there a public comment or question on this tree removal? Seeing none, thank you, though, I really appreciate that. Okay, so I will entertain a motion, it's a special permit or what, scenic road permit, entertain a motion to approve the scenic road permit.
So, any question? Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Quick question, the previous meeting with John, we didn't ask for public input. Do we want to do that? Because I think the developer had some input, or?
I, we can, that's fine.
I don't want to open a can of worms.
Before John leaves, do you want to come up and tell us what you think about the road acceptance idea versus any other idea for the buses? I was definitely going to ask you, but if, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, as far as the cost of plowing the road, I know that specifically because we've been plowing it for the last couple of years, both north and south. The north road, John's right, depending on the winter, bad winters higher, so it ranges somewhere between $30,000 and $35,000 a year to plow the north road. Now, I will say that we also plow the sidewalk in the wintertime, and even though the town is plowing the south road, we plow the sidewalk on the south side because the neighbors really want it plowed, so they got to walk on it, so the LOA has been paying for that. So we'll probably continue doing it on the north road even when it's accepted. The one thing I'll say about the north road, we offered to pave that a couple of months ago. We were told that they didn't want to have a special town meeting, that we shouldn't do it, so we didn't. That road, between raising the manholes and paving that road, that can be done in the course of about four or five days, so it can be done relatively quickly. We have a current price in the road, because we did price it two years ago, and we just priced it three months ago. I will tell you, to put that road in is about $160,000. The sidewalks are finished, they were finished in the beginning, so there's no other coat to go on those. There is landscaping to be complete, which, really too hot this time of year to be doing it, so spring would be the ideal time. So if the town wanted, we could pave the road now, or we could wait and do it in the spring, or we could do it next year, depending when. I will tell you, the bond, I've just been texting back and forth with my office to find out how much the bond is. Between the landscaping and the paving, it's about, excuse me, $400,000 of work to do. The bond currently that the town has, I was shocked at how much it was, it's $776,000. So it's almost twice what the cost of the work to be done is. So I think from a bonding point of view, you're more than secure, and I'm open to either paving and now paving in the spring, whenever you'd like to do it. I will tell you, I've also been having ongoing conversations with some of the selectmen and with Norman Town Manager about this whole bus issue, and it's amazing, and we've both talked to many bus companies, no bus company will drive on a private road. I don't know why. We even offered to buy them additional insurance, they weren't interested in doing that. Some of them have a misnomer, they think, well, how am I going to turn the bus around on a cul-de-sac? I say, you don't understand, it's a full-through road. The other thought we've had with the selectmen and town managers, maybe there could be a small 20, 30-person private bus that could run through the neighborhood, pick the kids up and drop them off where all the parents park now. So we're actually looking into that option, not ideal, but is an option.
So tell me again, where they wait now?
Yep.
A small, private bus.
In other words, if there were a private bus that drove through the neighborhood to pick the children up, brought them down to that spot, rather than having 30 cars there, we'd have just one bus dropping the kids off. My guess is probably a couple of parents would want to be there. I've had this conversation with Pulte and with the town, and we're now exploring getting some pricing on doing that. Now, whether we can get that done, I don't know.
Okay, so two questions-
I probably will know within a week.
Is the cost, and the other question I have is why wouldn't they just take them to the schools?
Sorry?
Why wouldn't they just take them the whole way to the schools?
Well, because that's not really what they do. The bus wouldn't be big enough. In other words, the bus would probably have to make two or three runs to bring the kids down.
I see.
I think it's like a 15, a 16, 18-person bus.
I got you.
It's like a shuttle.
They'd still be waiting on a road that, where the traffic does not stop, but you'd shuttle them down so the cars wouldn't be there, which is an improvement. The cars down there is a huge hazard.
It's a big improvement.
Yeah. Okay, so you'll know in a week if that's possible? All right. I have a question. Would you contemplate covering the cost of maintaining the roads for, if we were to pursue accepting the road, would you cover the cost of winter maintenance?
Until we finish it?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions?
Because that solves the bus problem.
Yeah.
And the bond is more than adequate.
So I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I think that that's open to input from the professionals, but thank you. Yeah, it's good to know. Thanks.
Thank you again.
Oh, one more question, Roy. Some people are worried about the cost of the special town meeting, which I don't think is huge. Would you cover the cost?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Would you cover the cost of calling a special town?
Of course.
Thank you.
I'm sure as much as that is.
Huh? What's that?
I should have asked, how much is that?
$1 million.
So, yeah, so I don't want to lie to you, Mr. McDowell just asked how much a special town meeting is. I think it is less than $5,000, but I don't want to lie to you, you know, I would want to-
So you gave it that long?
I would want to find out for sure, but it's not a huge cost, except it is an impediment to, you know, the town to-
More than adequate.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, somebody help me out. Yes?
Two points.
Yeah.
The public hearing for the scenic road, I believe, was not closed.
Thank you. Oh, Kobe, Kobe reminded us, didn't she?
Removed.
I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the scenic road. I so appreciate that, Kobe.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Really appreciate that.
And the other thing is, Mr. Petrosi may have a request.
Say it again?
Mr. Petrosi may have, I don't want to put words in his mouth, he may have a request.
Mr. Petrosi. He's up next.
He's up, he's up next.
I'm sorry, you're up.
No, Petrosi. Behind you.
All right.
Different developer.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Kobe, I was running late, so-
I was running late, so I'd just like to request a continuance to the, I know you're bored.
You are just rising so high in my personal.
I hope it pays off. But John and I talked about the 23rd of September being the next.
All right, and which would push your decision dates to the 30th of September? I'm getting a little bit better at this game, right? So you're amenable to that?
Yeah, fine.
All right.
Great.
That's, that's fine with me, and I think it's fine with the board, but let's take a vote.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion to continue the Buckland Road hearing to the 23rd of September, and the decisions involved to the 30th of September.
Maybe you can arrange for me to be a little earlier in the night.
We can tell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? I have lost my agenda, Gary. It's just gone.
Trails at Legacy Farms.
I'm sorry, Trails and 97 South Street. Okay. So the Trails and Legacy Farms. Yes, and then we're going to do the waivers on Whisper Way. The Trails.
Yep.
We've got to do that. And we're going to be, we're going to be split them out quickly. Yeah, I do too, but. All right. Welcome.
Thank you.
So this is the new public hearing for the Trails at Legacy Farms to amend the approved site plan and amend the master plan special permit. I am happy to hear your presentation, but we have advice from our town council that they have not had an opportunity to look at the work that you have sent us. So I know that we are going to need to wait for their input. So it's your choice if you would like to introduce it to us, or if you would like to propose continuing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
So this is in relation to the red line decisions that were sent to us on Friday. They haven't had a chance to review those. So they recommended that the board withhold making a decision on those decisions until they have a chance to review them. The site plan itself, there can be discussion?
Yep, there certainly can be discussion. But I do know that those red lines came in after our deadline, and we haven't had anybody review them. So I know we're going to have to wait for that input. Do you want to introduce it?
We've got to explain everything.
Yeah. Yes, I think we need, we need to go ahead.
Okay.
We have a significant time issue. Our project has been on hold for about nine months now.
Yep.
Because of the affordable unit issue.
Yeah.
That this board is, I think, very well aware of.
Yes.
I think it was in January where we first heard that we would no longer be allowed to have affordable units at the Trails. Our zoning required us to have 10% of the 180 units. That was passed in May of 2018. Our site plan was approved. And along with that approval came the obligation to build 18, 10% affordable units on site. And earlier this year, we understood through no fault of anybody that the state would not approve those affordable units if located on the Trails because of a restriction that was in the zoning that said that people under 18 would not be allowed to reside there. And in town meeting in May, I think it was Article 36, was defeated, which would have lifted that restriction. Fortunately, Article 37 passed, which gave us at least a solution to the affordable units, which I believe gave us the opportunity to either deliver those units elsewhere in the town or make some payment in lieu of the affordable units. And the way the affordable units work, for every nine units that we granted certificate of occupancy, the 10th needs to be an affordable. So we now are in a position where we can't build the affordable units at the Trails. And we went back to see how we could make this work. And I think we've come up with, I believe, a minor modification of our existing special permit. Our roads are not changing. All we're doing is changing the configuration of the buildings. We did have simplex, duplex, and triplex units initially. We still have them, we just have a different number of them. We went from, if you remember, I think I mentioned this several times in the hearings leading up to town meeting, that the triplexes, of which the original plan, we had 21 of, those existed only because we had affordable units. So 18 of our, all 18 of our affordable units were going to be in those triplex units. And once we were dealt a different situation and not being able to put those affordable units at the Trails, we, that really necessitated a redesign of our site plan. So we haven't changed the roads, we haven't changed the area that the buildings are located. We've just changed the number of each type structure. We went from 31 singles to 62. We went from 43 duplexes to 49. And so there's two increases there. And then a significant decrease was the triplexes, which went from 21 to five. So if you do the math, that's a decrease overall of five units. So this amended plan before you is for 175 units. Again, we think that all the engineering drainage calculations that work for 180 units obviously would work better for a less dense project. The original plan had these 21 triplexes spread evenly throughout the community because we needed, you know, as, when you have to do affordable units, you have to do them in proportion to the market rate units. So we had them spread out, sprinkled throughout the entire, I think, 44 acres of the site. So basically, what the proposal before you is just to really change the number of units down by five and the configuration between the tri's, duplexes, and simplexes. I have my engineer here, he could quickly, briefly go through the plan. And I believe the peer review engineer is here as well. And I think all that work has been done. We were actually on hold right now and have been since the spring.
Because of the affordable housing payment is to happen, right? Before you get?
No, no, we're kind of on hold because there was, we didn't know how this was all going to come out with the affordable units. So we were concerned, because of the design we had, we were concerned whether we should really go forward or wait until we got some resolution at town meeting on where the affordable units could be built. Again, we always anticipated that they would be built on site, and that option is now not available. It has to be done offsite. So it really required us to take a good hard look at the site as it was planned, because it was planned for affordable units. And now that the affordable units are not going to be built at the Trails, we had to really look at that, because again, those triplex units only existed for affordable units.
So until you get your new slightly modified site plan approved, you're on hold, it's not really the payments.
On hold, and the payments will happen when they happen.
Okay, just clarifying.
Yeah, we're not going to change that at all. When we get to nine COs, the 10th one will either make a payment or produce a unit elsewhere in town. So that's unchanged here. What we do have is, we've been at this now for almost a year. It was last fall when we started construction, we started marketing, and we have seven units under construction, but they've been under construction now since about February, and we haven't started anything new. And we have buyers, because we've been marketing, and many of those buyers are buying units that we cannot start until the amended site plan is approved.
Okay.
Because moving buildings around creates a little bit of a sort of a chain reaction, and other units, even though they may not have changed much, they changed slightly. And if you look at this, we have a plan that shows, so-called red line plan, that shows the original plan and anything that's changed. And there's a significant amount of units that have changed that we can't start and meet closing dates with buyers until this modified plan is approved.
Okay, I'm going to go to the municipal planner for comments.
So the plan itself, there weren't very many comments from Beta. I think it's pretty straightforward. They're just complying with Article 37. The Design Review Board approves or recommended approval of the design. So just in kind of a sense of process, it seems like it's a lot of legal discussions that need to happen in terms of the written aspect of the decision. So if there's any chance that the board can get the site plan figured out and understood, and then it's more of just an approval at the next hearing, with hopefully all the legal information worked out by the attorneys, once we get the comments from the town council. Specifically, some of their questions were, they wanted to flesh out the affordable housing component a little bit further. And then there was a question about the restricted land and how they were going to approach that. And then that was just off the top of a quick review of the proposed red lines. So there may be more comments in that. But in terms of the site plan, I think they've pretty clearly explained what the changes were.
Through the chair, can I make a suggestion or a question to John?
You sure can.
Is it possible that we can approve tonight with contingent on legal approval?
That may be difficult. Because if you look at the decision itself, the site plan decision that you'd be amending, there's a lot of changes that need to be made. I would not feel comfortable giving that advice.
Just putting it out there as an option. If you don't feel comfortable, I'm fine with it, without it.
Any other questions, Dave? Mary?
No, no questions.
Frank?
We're just getting some of this data today, and I haven't seen Beta's remarks, so I'm checking my email now.
I sent it Friday.
Fridays, okay. But these things are due before Thursday or Wednesday of last week, so.
Just as a point of clarification, I was delayed in sending them the information, so they actually turned around the responses to Beta.
I read your comments about that, but still, it's.
The red lines, however, were received on Friday.
I have like questions about this stuff that I really need to look at and see Phil's comments, so I haven't done that, so.
I will ask Phil for his, we'll just go around the table.
I just want to say, we saw this in detail at Design Review, and we think it's actually an improved layout. Things are a little bit spaced out better because they've removed some of the units. So in general, I think the layout looks fine, but we'll have to wait until the legal language is final.
Thank you.
Yeah, I too feel it's an improvement in spacing, and I don't think we should hold them very much longer.
So maybe this is for John. It was my understanding the Ossmud had a maximum number of units in total. By reducing this five units, does that allow for five additional units to happen in the Ossmud?
Technically, yes. I don't believe there's any proposal for those five units anywhere.
Go ahead.
Okay, so that, really, is we're cap, how many units we can do, and everything is spoken for, so there will be no addition.
Okay, so it'd just be a straight reduction of five?
Straight reduction.
Okay.
So I guess here's my question. Is there a way to work around so that we can continue with our process and not subvert it, and they can make progress?
I don't see a way without modifying the site plan decision. That would give them a new site plan decision.
So you already, we already have an approved project, and we have a permit. And what I've done is I've taken units, and I've slid them around and fit them better into the landscape, and we've reduced the density. And probably the most important part that we did was we took all the roof water and we were infiltrating it back into the ground. So we've taken out another portion of stormwater that wasn't even being contemplated before. So the way I saw it was that we were doing this kind of an administrative review, because we already have an approved plan. And that I didn't realize that the decision was going to be that drastically changed, because honestly, I thought we were substituting plan numbers. And I'm shocked, because we put a great deal of effort to get to this point tonight with 10 sheets and all the engineering being done. I thought it was really going to be a plan substitution. And administratively, it was going to be an easy decision for you.
This has been, and I don't think, I'm not arguing with you. I think from your perspective, I would have thought the same thing. This has been a little bit tangled just because it's a problem of sort of nobody's making or everybody's making, and we're trying to find our way through, and it needed a town meeting vote to give us our direction. So it's been a little bit difficult from the start, but I think we all are nodding along with the fact that, you know, the Design Review has, sees it as an improvement.
Put all of the comments in, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Revere.
Yep, a couple things. One, I think we've written, the road was exactly the same, it's just kind of shifting houses and changing the style of the houses. We did meet with the Design Review Board through, we should have sent you a note, but basically they signed off on it. The existing permit allows for some minor changes. And I would suggest that you have the right to say a minor change. If we gave you the numbers of units that we would look for building permits on, and you accept the location of those units as a minor administrative change that lets us proceed with those building permits while you continue the rest of the review.
It was sort of what I was looking for. I don't know if that's possible or supportable by the board. I mean, we don't necess, we have no connection to holding you up further. We understand that this has been complex and time-consuming and problematic. So I don't, I don't know.
Is, I'm just curious, and I'm not saying this is the proper pathway, but is there a possibility of even us giving some initial straw vote in a sense, and then you would continue, but at your own risk, assuming that we would finalize it at a later point in time? And I don't even know if that's an option either.
So what happens with us putting the buildings in where they're shown here is we actually survey in those locations? So I can assure you, they're going exactly where they're shown on the plan. What I can't do is assure you they're going in accordance with the previous plan if I was to follow the one that we've given you. I think that's the most important distinction. If you could make that one, that we, we've referenced exactly the sheet that we're replacing and where those units are, and they're shown on this plan. So really taking those two sheets, they're the first two red line sheets. If we follow that pattern, we get the project we've presented to you. That's what we really need to accomplish.
So in process, just a question, John. Is it the red line they need to review? Or is there a legal document that's associated with the housing issue?
So the red line, as I understand it, the red line is modifications that they want to make to the permit itself. And having a legal town council review that is critical to getting the correct decision that they can, that the building department and the applicant can act on.
And what kind of timeframe is that going to, is that going to take for, so that they?
They said they could get the comments back by the end of the week.
But our next meeting is September 9th.
So, I mean, there is a possibility of holding a planning board meeting on the 26th, as it was regularly scheduled, for this alone. Make it quick, to clarify that point with the attorneys. I mean, we didn't have a lot of time to talk about it, because they got it sent to them on Friday, they had to look at it, and then we talked this afternoon. we talked this afternoon before end of business. So, it was kind of like looking at a high level of the permits themselves and seeing what needs to change.
I would be amenable to meeting sooner if we could get a quorum, or...
It's a simple majority, right?
I believe, for the master plan special, probably would be two-thirds.
So, we would need at least six people, and all of them would have to be in favor, and it's August, and we committed to not having that second meeting, but it would...
I can do it next Monday.
Next Monday is the growth study committee for two of us.
Okay. But it could be at a different time.
It could be at a different time, but earlier is...
I'd like to make a comment, and this is just in general, not specific to this case directly. The speed of the town is the speed of the town. We have to have materials in front of us when we have our meetings posted, not after. Regardless of how that happens, we need to have time to review, we need to hear back from our town council on things, we need to hear back and read and understand. I have questions about this I would love to ask in the future, but sometimes, we just need to take our time and review things the right way.
Thank you. So, I just wanna make a point for the public, that this is a unicorn and not a horse. This is a situation that had gone through an exhaustive set of public hearings, and these changes are mandated by forces beyond the applicant's control, and we have some ownership in helping problems solve in a proactive, productive way. But I absolutely agree with you that it is important to be thoughtful and do our due diligence, but I do think that we have really done that on this, and I know that we have some information that we still have to have. So, I am more in favor of trying to get a meeting, if we can get the requisite number of people. What, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, I mean, it seems like the twenty-sixth is a, I'm just curious to go around and say, I mean, I'm available on the twenty-sixth.
Are you available on the twenty-sixth?
We always answer for available.
Through the Chair, question on process, did you say supermajority was six or five?
Supermajority is five, but it needs a supermajority, so that's six.
Oh, it needs a supermajority, okay, thanks. Thanks.
Yes.
You're available on the twenty-sixth.
I apologize now.
That's it, it's okay, nobody was planning on it.
Yes.
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 Nope.
Yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. So then, you need all six, right? So here is what I recommend, you work like mad to make sure that you and town council are in violent agreement on all the wording, right? So that it's really straightforward when we see you on the twenty-sixth, at what time.
Ma'am, discussion please.
Hold on, stop.
Discussion, please.
Nope.
He's planning a meeting, and that subverts of people who've been elected on this board don't have a say.
Don't make me ask you to leave.
I won't.
Well, you might. Okay. What, our meeting for growth study committee is at seven.
I think it's at two.
It's the week after.
Oh, many thank yous.
And no conflict.
Many thank yous, okay.
Yeah, my vote, my attempt at the nineteenth.
If we do move forward with another meeting two weeks from now that Frank cannot make, can he ask his questions now?
Yes, I will absolutely.
It's after ten o'clock, I have to wake up at six AM, so when am I gonna sleep?
I'm up at five. Okay.
I'll see you on the highway.
And we'd like to get done. So, I am motivated to try and proceed with this for a lot of reasons, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and I am gonna entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to seven o'clock on, seven, okay?
Sure.
Seven, yes, seven?
Sure.
Seven o'clock on August twenty-sixth. In, is the basement available, do you know?
We, I think we should still technically have this room.
When does the work start?
It's not, there's no date certain.
For the start, okay, in this room, then, Town Hall, second floor.
Between now and then, we'll work on everything.
Make it, make it pristine, right, just as long as legal and Beta and everybody is on board, I think that we don't expect any problems.
Just to clarify, that's having everything in alignment and pristine before the deadline, not before the meeting?
That's right, that's right.
So, yeah, our expectation is to have a packet on the...
Yeah, by the Tuesday before.
By Tuesday before, five o'clock Tuesday before. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I ran a vote.
Oh, all those in favor?
Discussion?
Yes.
Did we say we'd let Frank ask his questions?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Out of respect for the other people that are here to speak, it's after ten o'clock, I'm, I will not ask any questions of this, I might pose to you guys meeting, but you guys voted to meet, so meet.
I welcome you to submit your comments and questions, I'll make sure that they are asked.
Thank you, thank you.
So, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are gonna power through.
South Street.
South Street. Sorry for the wait, I appreciate your patience, everybody. Happy to see some familiar faces. So, we can, I assume there, but we can also get the information to them. So, we would very much like to do this without hurrying you, but as quickly as possible. I'm sure you're above the same line. Okay. Welcome, please introduce yourself and your project.
Yes. My name is Harold Nagian, I am the manager for Southfield Properties Single I at ninety-seven South Street. I'm here along with Andy Leverod, who is from Design Science, our architects, and Joe Markodont, Joe Markodont Associates, our professional engineer, Anthony Ruttuno, who is the CEO for Lycan, and Matt Trion, who is actually the engineering operator, and my project manager, Bob Connors, sitting over there in the corner. And with that, I am going to turn this over to Joe, in the interest of time to get it going.
Thank you. Hi, Joe.
Evening, Joe Markodont, we're part of the design team, working with Harold. We are ninety-seven South Street, about thirteen hundred feet southerly of Haywood Street, six and a half acre parcel between South Street and four ninety-five, the existing number ninety-seven. It may ring a bell, it was part of a TIF discussion and tax adjustment on behalf of Lycan and Harold back in February of twenty nineteen. The building, the parcel was created eighty-two, the building is about thirty-five years old. This is number ninety-seven, highlighted here in white. Chiefly, what we're trying to do is get a space for Lycan Biosciences, manufacturing of, manufacturer of gene therapies. After kicking this around with the staff at Town Hall, it appears that we are a minor site plan. The thresholds are brief, we think we're under those, five thousand square feet is the maximum for a minor site plan, we're on the order of four hundred and ten square feet on two entryway additions I've highlighted here in red, Andy's referring to on his sketch. We, the changes to the entryways and the walkways, we lose about three spaces, we've got on the order of three hundred and twenty on the project site. So, we are minor. I don't wanna minimize what we're proposing, I don't want the board to get the wrong impression, but I consider a lot of what is on these plans, as we're serving many masters, as site management. The project site is a little long in the tooth, so we would like to take and mill and resurface from ninety-nine northerly, so from the limit of this building all the way to the other edge, the northerly edge of the pavement. Mill that, resurface it, and re-stripe it. It's been patched with sealant for twenty-odd years now, and it's, it needs an update. We would like to update the lighting in each of those traffic islands that are set as regular intervals of a parking lot. A lot of the trees have been lost to disease, have rotted out, have died off. We would like to, as part of that, replace the poles and the landscaping in those islands. To keep those trees alive, we propose some irrigation to those spots. Seems kinda intuitive to put brand-new trees in and then not care for them. And then, out along South Street, there are a couple of landscape islands that have simply lost whatever vegetation was in there. So we've got a landscape plan through Western Nursery, Peter Mezitz people, to add some landscaping along the front, along South Street. So, that stuff adds to the complexity of the designs, but I think it's because we're trying to satisfy a paving contractor, satisfy a building department, satisfy a conservation commission, so there's a lot on those plans, but we are a minor, minor site plan. So, all our plans have been prepared, the designs are prepared, to be in compliance with site plan standards. All our building additions are in conformance with dimensional requirements and the zoning bylaws. We are currently set to go with both conservation and design review on the twentieth, to wrap up the issues, issues between those two boards. So we feel that we have met all the standards, have put together a good design, and that is a brief, I guess, thumbnail sketch of where we're at, if you'd like to talk about anything in depth, Andy's available, and I as well.
Okay. Right, go to John.
So we've got a memo from the Director of Municipal Inspections confirming their opinion and my opinion that this is a minor site plan amendment, the square footage doesn't meet the threshold of a major, they're losing only three parking spaces, which doesn't meet the threshold of a major. So, it seems like it's an overall positive improvement to the site. The one thing that they need to go through is Design Review Board, since it is a site plan amendment, and they are changing the facade of the building, and those entrances are gonna be something different, so they are scheduled for the August twentieth Design Review Board meeting, to get feedback from them.
Board members, I'll start with Dave.
Can you just describe the undergrounding of utilities, with, are they all currently underground?
They're currently underground now, there's been a request from the fire chief to add an extension of the municipal water to a new hydrant, to aid in any potential firefighting activities, and we're going to run a line through the parking lot to connect those islands with irrigation. That's the limit of utility work.
All set?
Mary? Hello. This, this plan is just for changes to ninety-seven, is that correct?
Correct.
Both buildings are involved in this project, though?
But we decided to call the project site, so that everyone had a full handle on what the scope of the work was, was to this northerly side of ninety-nine. So, this pink line is the boundary line, there are reciprocal parking agreements and access agreements. Harold owns both ninety-seven and ninety-nine, it's a formality more than anything else, but the idea was for you folks to wrap your arms around the scope of it, we would set the project site at that boundary line.
Okay. And just for clarification, is Lycan planning on occupying both of those buildings, or just one of the buildings?
Just one, let's start.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna make a point, if you're gonna speak, you're welcome to speak, but people at home cannot hear you if you don't come up to the mic.
The question was, would Lycan occupy both buildings, ninety-seven and ninety-nine? The answer is no, we'll start with one, we fully anticipate to expand in the future.
Please introduce yourself.
Anthony Ruttuno, CEO, Lycan.
Okay. And, yeah, I, my impression at first was that it was both buildings, and I was just curious as to why you weren't proposing a walkway between the two, or a covered walkway, but clearly, if you're not occupying both buildings, that would be why. So, thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Frank?
Thank you. Thanks, Joe, another good, clear presentation, it's very straightforward, and I think it's a good idea.
No questions?
I think it's fine.
As long as, I guess we haven't received any specific lighting information, as long as the lighting is downward facing and not very tall, was there, was there anything that I missed in my packet, or I didn't see?
It might've been in there, unless it was a different project.
Yeah, I thought so.
At least in the text.
There was, there was like a plan, there was a plan, but I wasn't sure specifically what it looked like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're a little short.
It might be something that would be handled by Design Review, but...
Right.
Quite frankly, we thought we would take it up with them in greater detail. The idea was to meet the standards in the site plan review, so our pole's going to be fifteen feet tall, LED fixtures, DocSky compliant, downward focused, we have no spillage, off-site, they're all set for safe levels around the parking areas for vehicular and pedestrian traffic, but we keep it all on-site. We submitted those, assuming that we maybe have a cursory discussion, and perhaps more in-depth on the twentieth, but that's the gist of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
Chair?
Hold on one second. Rob?
So, from my perspective, I think this is a great, this is what we want employers in town to do, unemployment's low, this is, appears to me, to improvement to the site, to attract workers to Lycan Bioscience, and the more workers we attract to Lycan Bioscience, the more workers we attract to Hopkinton, this is, as long as it adheres to, everything needs to adhere to, it's a total win.
Win, yes, I'm sorry.
It would be helpful to get the lighting details and landscape details for the Design Review.
Okay, landscape details are in that package, but we will follow up lighting.
Yep.
Sure.
Anything else?
I too stand.
Phil? Phil, did you have any comments?
I had no chance to look at this, so.
Okay, I think it's so minor, I don't think we, okay, perfect. And are there any members of the public here to comment? And the fire chief, welcome.
Just, they were very forward with access designs, SWP path analysis, they're working with us on some of the fire protection systems, so very happy with the experience, thanks.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so, from a process perspective, we usually wait for the Design Review Board review before we make our final decision, but it doesn't appear like anybody has any big issues that you need to worry about. When, when, might we, yeah?
If I may ask, why do we wait for the Design Review Board? Because...
Because they're not a regulatory board, and if the lighting doesn't, if they aren't happy with the lighting, we would, to put that in our decision.
Because they're just an advisory board, got it, thank you.
I appreciate the question, though. So when are we able to see this again?
As long as the Design Review Board doesn't have a lot of comments, and it would be a fairly straightforward vote, we could probably squeeze them in on the ninth.
Or the twenty-sixth?
I suppose you could say that.
If people are amenable?
We can do it, we can do it.
The twenty-sixth?
No, it's twenty-sixth.
Oh, wait, oh, you, this is what the...
Oh, you mean August.
I thought, yeah, sorry, I thought you meant the ninth.
Yes, you were saying August, you say that.
I didn't hear that clearly.
Honestly, it feels very straightforward, I don't wanna rush anybody.
It starts to become a more like a meeting, but that's...
I understand, I had some trepidation in my heart as I said the words.
When is the Design Review?
Twentieth.
That's the thirty-five minute meeting we're talking about, right?
Mm-hmm.
Through the Chair, say approvals do go, this is a question, approvals do go, we added an extra step, an extra meeting to accommodate quicker approval, does that change the project schedule? Like, are you, were you, would you be able to act sooner because we had an approval a week sooner, or two weeks sooner?
Does it change?
The sooner the better.
Well, that's what goes without saying.
So, please introduce yourself, and the question is, is there any reason that you couldn't wait until the ninth? Does it help you to be seen on August twenty-sixth versus September ninth?
So, again, just Bob Connors, I work with Harold Nagian, the sooner the better, construction schedule-wise, we're trying to get everybody on board and going.
It's always, appreciate it.
Just my thoughts, I mean, I'd rather wait till September ninth, and I know it's only a two-week period, but I have a preference to keep that twenty-sixth meeting very short, I think there's extenuating circumstances, so...
Yeah, I agree. The September ninth meeting is shaping up to be really big, so that was, that was my thought.
This should be pretty close, it should be very quick on the ninth.
Which is fine, I'm not arguing, I'm fine with that.
I mean, so, I would just propose that we don't need any further review, we need Design Review...
And Conservation.
Comments.
Right.
Well, they need ConCom, but it's a, you know, I don't, I really think it's a Design Review Board that we're waiting for, I mean, if ConCom had some major feedback, we'd want it, but, but I don't.
That's also to them to, so, that'd be my take, is we just make sure that when we come back, we make it as efficient as possible, and we go through the review, we hear Design Review Board's comments, we have any questions related to those. we have any questions related to those, Design Review Board comments, and then, and then we vote.
So, uh, I will entertain a motion from somebody to propose the continuation date.
So I would move to continue till September ninth.
I'll second that.
All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
I'm a no.
Well, no, abstain, that's three, one, two, three, four, five, okay, September ninth it is. We could have locked up that vote, now that would have been fun.
I thought it would have been good just to take it on, the twenty-sixth.
I appreciate your patience, it should be pretty straightforward, provided everything goes well with the Design Review. We'll see on the ninth. And not, I will commit to you that we will not see you at ten. We'll do, we'll, we'll do it earlier in the meeting, okay?
That would be nice.
Okay, thank you for your patience, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so the last thing is to revoke those waivers for Whisper Way. I'll look at it in our meeting packet, somebody remind me the page?
Page nine.
Eight, nine. Nine or ten, actually, it kind of rolls on.
Uh, yeah, yeah, nine, ten.
Okay, so, eight?
Starting at page eight.
To nine? So, um, I think we're just going to take the waivers and fly through them, and see how that goes first. All right, does that make sense?
Did we, just the two, or all of them?
No, it's a new hearing. So I would, I propose that, somebody make a motion that the waivers that we previously approved, we approve.
Or we vote on them together?
Yes, as one.
Yes, so moves.
Is there a second, is there any discussion to that approach?
We wait for Mary to come back, sorry.
Yeah, she, she clearly wasn't.
We want to read out which ones those were.
She wasn't ready for my, my efficiency. The definitive plan, the cross-sections, we waived the number of cross-sections that were needed. We waived the trees being, because there are no trees being retained within the right-of-way, they don't have to identify which ones are being retained. Just saying. The streetlights, we waived the streetlights, but the applicant has agreed to install dark sky compliant, low-lit lighting at the end of each of the driveways for safety. The, um. Yep, sorry, the what?
Side slopes.
I must have gone to the wrong page, I went to the wrong page, that's why it didn't make any sense. The side slopes, the roadside slopes, the three-to-one max. They're, we're waiving that requirement to bring the existing Whisper Way into compliance with the requirements for maximum road slope ten percent. The side slope abutting the town forest in certain sections will need to be reduced to a two-to-one slope and vegetated and stabilized. So we're waiving the three-to-one requirement.
What was the page of the, all these again on your sheet, John?
Page, on page nine now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Of the memo.
Of the memo.
Yes, thank you, perfect.
Yes?
Real quick, just for Mary's sake, we moved to vote on the previously approved waivers, all together, as one group.
Thank you. Uh, the disturbance to the natural topography, with depths of fill are going to be greater than eight feet to facilitate some of the crossings. Disturbance to natural topography, there will be some slopes greater than twenty-five percent. Stormwater basin embankments, the side slopes of the detention ponds will be three-to-one. Due to buffer constraints, an impervious core has been added to the pond to reduce the side slopes to two-to-one, while maintaining the top of the blurn width of ten feet. So reduce from three-to-one to two-to-one. Stormwater basin embankments, the detention basin edges located twenty-five feet from houses or property lines and the roadway, that happens occasionally, that's been waived. Those are the ones we have previously approved, am I correct? Okay, so we have moved and seconded that we will consider all of those waivers en masse? So all, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry, discussion, so those are now for the two remaining, or they are for the two remaining?
The two remaining are, have not been discussed, are not in it.
Okay.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the, the first one that we did not finish considering, it's a new hearing, so it's brand-new anyway, the buffer areas, a minimum of a hundred feet. There are a couple places, because of the site constraints, the previous building, the, the previous existing road, where they will not maintain the minimum of a hundred feet or greater, only to town, a budding property on one side, but a budding property, private property on one end, with, with an easement.
With the easement.
Proposed, proposed? Is, is there no buffer required there? The easement doesn't require a buffer?
A waiver to the buffer.
A waiver, thank you.
Easement doesn't? I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, so explain to us where your, the waiver applies for the buffer zone requirement.
So all along Whisper, the existing Whisper, basically, that's all.
And what's on the other side of the existing Whisper?
This is town, the town forest.
Yep.
And then we have buffer all the way through here. I think there's a, I think this point over here might be less than a hundred, where this, just the way the existing, again, the way the existing road is.
Okay.
We, and then along four ninety-five, we're not, meaning a hundred-foot buffer.
Okay.
This plan is just a prettier plan, but we're, we basically squared this off, and we're asking for just an easement through the open space. It would be an underground utility easement. We actually have, are proposing one through this portion here, to connect, in order to get the sewer from these two lots over to the whole septic system. So it, you know, it's just the width of whatever we need for the, it should be a fairly.
Be narrow, twenty foot wide, and, and once we do the work, we'll just vegetate it, and you won't know it's there.
That's the internal one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's the thought behind what we want to do with the, with this one as well, is just for.
It's just, just for future, maybe. If, if, if solar went back that way, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's six acres there, six point eight acres, and then there's a, a thirty-one acre parcel, and a, and a five acre plus parcel, that hooks all the way up to Valleywood. And, uh, just someday, who knows? If the landowners got together. So the, and then the reason for it coming out this way would, would, would very likely be just to get, to get the, the three-phase power out on Wood Street. And getting it through Valleywood would be very difficult, it's underground.
Okay, so I'm going to go around the board and take questions on this waiver request. Rod, do you want to go first, or you want to wait?
I, I prefer to wait if I can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm going to come back.
Amy, you want to start us out? Okay, you know what, Gary, why don't you start?
I have a question, so the utility easement is going from the, the back of that property all the way to Wood Street?
No, Wood Street's in front of it.
Yep, I understand.
Okay.
So can you show me where that utility is, no, no, sorry, not the one internal, the one that goes?
External, yeah.
If the utility easement's going to go from, if you drew this line straight across, it's just going to go from here to, to, through the open space, for that hundred feet. It's a hundred-foot long, twenty feet wide. Because this will be private property. And before he sells this property, he would need to get a, he would reserve a utility access easement all the way down to Wood Street. But that's not part of what he's asking for from you guys. But yes, he would need to have that utility easement go all the way to Wood Street.
I got you.
Yep, I understand, thank you.
Okay. Frank?
Uh, no questions.
Mary?
No questions.
I, I hate to be devil's advocate, and you guys have gone way out of your way for all this stuff, but to me, it just seems like squeezing things in here and there. To my opinion, if it can't fit, if it can't fit a loop road through it.
This is for the, the buffers, right?
Right, right, understood, understood, but just it's accumulation of a lot of different waivers, and that, I mean, to me, maybe it seems more like an A and R of a Wood Street, but that's my own personal opinion.
Okay. Um, I will tell you that I am not comfortable with the easement, and would rather that it, it, there's just too much that we don't know, and we're, we're voting on without knowing anything about that, what amounts to be a very large, um, large parcel if all the owners, as you say, got together. So that's me, and I'll go back around. I'm back to Rob, Deb, or Amy.
Do you know the, the land that taking, basically, this easement would go all the way through to potentially, Valleywood, is it?
Yes, yep.
Do you know who the current owners are? Is it, like, this parcel right here, do you have any idea of that?
Uh, yes, a six-point-eight, six-point-eight acre parcel, and then there's a twenty-one acre parcel, and.
That's owned by somebody else.
Owned by somebody else.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I haven't even talked to them.
Yeah.
I'm just, this is just, I don't know, I guess, can I just come back for an easement some other time, or?
I'm going to ask that, I'm going to ask that question, actually. Is, you, you had something you wanted to say or ask?
And that, it can wait, it's just some general comments on the easement and the.
So his question is whether or not he can come back in the future for an easement?
So Ron and I talked about the potential for that easement, and I looked into it a little bit further, talked to Elaine. And there's some uncertainty as to whether that easement would be usable through just this process. So one of the things we talked about is, it's been determined, determined by the courts that access for a higher level use, like commercial use, commercial solar, through residential use is not allowed without a variance. So that access may need to require a variance to actually be allowed. So, I mean, you could probably put an easement on there if you wanted to. I, I don't know how that would necessarily work with the open space. And the Planning Board has no authority to, or not authority, but no requirement to allow them to put an easement for future development use on the site elsewhere. So it's, it would be more of a legal issue, I think, at this point, than a special permit issue, allow, whether they can allow that easement through the open space, once the open space is established.
Right, thank you. And we don't know if he can come back for an easement in the future.
Soon, likely no.
So I'm just thinking of open space projects that I've done, and. Well, one of them has a car path, one of them has a path, has a water main under it. I don't know, I guess I look at that as the same, but is it?
I guess the question is, is the water main serving the site? Because this easement would serve a use off the site through the.
No, it actually, it actually serves the town monitor for, for, you know, another hookup, you know, another, another loop.
That may be something that's allowed, I guess, my thinking was, if you proposed this easement later, the open space would essentially be either owned by the HOA, or deeded over to Hall or the town. And then you would have to work with that organization.
Right.
To get that easement, at a later point.
Yeah, it's okay, I, I'll just, that would be something. Obviously, it seems to be resistant, so I'll just drop it. That's easy.
Amy, were you done?
Well, I guess, does our vote on the buffer areas affect the easement?
Yeah.
It does. Okay.
So if the septic, if we're, if we're, if, if in the buffer zone, the septic needs to cross over, what disturbance to the environment is that going to make? How big a hole are you going to have to dig and disturb the rock to bring those lines all together to that multiple-purpose septic system? How is that going to affect what you're trying to do by not putting a loop road, but still putting a system in there? What is the difference? Because you're still disturbing soil, you're still just a rock.
Yeah, it's significantly less disturbance, so, again, then, if we did a loop road, the, the width of the road is, the width of the right-of-way for the road is.
But I'm also saying, but what I'm saying is to not show it on the plan. Do you have the other copy that, that you, that you highlighted?
Does it impact the, the buffer zone, does it?
Yeah, she said.
No, it's not part of the buffer.
Oh, that one's not part of the buffer?
No.
Okay, so that one's internal to the?
Correct.
Okay, to the twelve homes?
It's internal to the open space.
Internal to the.
It's not, it's not the, it's different than the buffer.
Okay, all right. So it may affect wetlands ultimately, but it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect what we're voting on now?
Correct, it does not vote, it does not affect the buffer.
Okay.
You, Rob?
I think if, so my opinion, uh, s. The buffer space requirement, I don't, I don't have any more questions at this time. I think, uh, they've done a good job trying to adhere to the requirements, so I don't have any more questions.
Can I make a motion?
You can.
Um, so I'll move to accept the buffer zone waiver with one modification, that it not include the easement on, the utility easement on the southeast.
Is there a second?
Corner of the property.
Second.
And it was to accept, to approve the waiver?
Yeah, sorry, to approve, thank you.
Right.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining on this, just on principle. I think that he has a right to ask for the easement, even if it's not used for anything, from my understanding of it, but, that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, the last one is the lot frontage depth. So we talked a lot about that in particular. So I'm happy to go around the table and ask members if they have any questions or comments in particular on that waiver request. I'll start with Dave.
All set.
Mary?
No questions.
I'll sign.
No questions.
Just going to say, I'm inclined to, to grant the lot, lot frontage depth waiver, because I, I think it makes sense, even, because they could get twelve houses either way, so I think it makes sense to have the lots make more sense in the driveways, to accommodate.
I agree, I'm, I'm in that same.
I agree, I think the, the presentation was really well done, so.
Rob?
So my, I don't really have a question, it's more just a statement. This is, this is a type of plan people in the town will look at, like, we, as Planning Board members, we, we should do what's, what's by the bylaws, and I am going to do that. And a vote to, my opinion is to vote to approve this, but this is a plan the town will look at and go, what is the Planning Board doing, in my opinion? And this is something in the bylaws we need to look at as we go forward in the future.
I agree, Rob.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Just to comment on that, you're, you're actually voting against the bylaws when you're approving all this, so the bylaws are there to prevent this.
Well, the bylaws last a way of.
What's that?
Well, the problem is, this point, like, the, the reality is, there's going to be twelve houses, whether I approve this or not, so me, me approving or rejecting, rejecting this plan, we have just a worse plan that will adhere to the bylaws.
That's right.
So the, the real issue is the bylaws allow this, this basically general configuration. Like, the, the reality is, this is not, the bylaws are not satisfying what the people, the best interest of the town, in my opinion.
Just through the Chair, I would just say that if, if you said no to all these bylaw overrides, they would have to come back with a better plan. I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to convince you here, I'm just saying, in one sentence.
I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to convince you here, I'm just saying, in one sentence, in one sentence, you're saying that the bylaws are not there, and the next sentence, you're saying, I'm gonna accept them all, you know? The overrides.
So, I, I, I...
That's the only point.
I will hear everybody, but we're gonna do it through the chair, and I'm just gonna say, um, from my perspective, there are challenging pieces of property and there are respectful ways to approach it that sort of, um, that make the best of a tough situation, and the bylaws are, I mean, if, you know, we don't wanna do a bylaw review necessarily to fix a challenging piece of property, but more generally, the typical, um, building, but I get the point, and I, I agree. It's not, this is, this is, the essential work of the planning board is balancing the bylaws, the needs of the town, the rights of the property owners, um, and, and, you know, every vote is, uh, is, you know, is a correct vote, right?
Yeah, and if I can kind of, uh, piggyback on that, I, I think part of the challenge that we have is, we have owners that have particular, unique pieces of property, and I think they have to carve out what they can, and I think that's, and I think that we have to carve out our response as well, so, let's just piggyback on what you said.
All right, is somebody prepared to make a motion on the waiver for lot frontage depth?
I would make a motion to accept the waiver for lot frontage depth.
Second.
To approve the waiver?
To approve. Yeah, approve the waiver.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Yes?
If I may, uh, I just feel like this might be the most appropriate time. Um, I think everyone, I'm actually very impressed with how the board is talking about this, because that's what I was gonna say, is that looking at a purely, uh, interpretational view of the bylaw, the, the authors of this bylaw contemplated these types of developments, and that's why they allowed for the provisions of these waivers and the, uh, common driveways. Um, so, while I appreciate your concern about that, I think the board has actually taken the right approach and very thoroughly reviewed these in, in the scope of this project, rather than just grant them outright. Um, I think, as somebody who's dealt with zoning bylaws, and I'm sure a lot of you have dealt with zoning bylaw rights, um, that's kind of the intent of that type of waiver allowance, is to let the board do that, so...
Awesome. So, it has been, um, moved and seconded? Um, all those in favor of granting the waiver signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Abstain? So, um, we recognize that you have some, uh, last-minute details to work out. When can you come back to have everything completely wrapped up and typed for beta?
So, the, the one question that I wanted, I guess, to just clarify with the board is, um, 'cause the fire chief was, um, saying that he was comfortable with the turnaround, um, needs for the driveways, but Phil is still looking for us to provide additional information, um, when, prior to getting any of the building permits, the, all of these will have to be reviewed by the fire department again, um, before we can get the building permit, so, what we were hoping was that, um, that we did provide the turning plan for, um, what's, it's called a SU thirty?
Yep.
Um, which is, you know, a, a typical, like, UPS delivery vehicle, so we did provide that turning to show that that can turn around on, uh, on all the driveways, so...
Can I, can I offer this? We are fifty minutes overdue for our, um, adjournment time. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see that as an unsolvable concern. Um, I think that that can be worked out. Phil is a, is a reasonable, talented...
Yes.
Engineer, and the fire chief is a reasonable, talented fire chief, and I think we can solve that. So, I would just make sure that, um, everybody is in agreement, as best as you can before you come. But, if we have to solve it, we will, but I don't think we're gonna have to.
Okay. So, I, I think we can be ready for the next meeting, there's...
September ninth is pretty packed. What does it look like?
Uh, so, right now, it's, starting at seven-thirty, we've got Seventy-six Main, Ninety-seven South Street, Maspinock Woods, EverSource LNG Pipeline, uh, EverSource Scenic Road, Two, Two Hundred and Twenty-three Pond Street Scenic Road, and Elmwood Farms Amendment to Definitive Subdivision.
And Legacy Farms.
And Legacy Farms now?
Trails at Legacy Farms.
Trails, the trails? Yes.
I think we're down to like four items. Is there a way to, totally right. Is there a way to vote this and condition it upon these items being, being resolved? I think they can be resolved administratively. A turnaround for a truck in a yard. I don't know, I, I just think, I think we're down to the, to the end, I, I don't...
What are the, what, somebody help me, because my brain is, is fried. Somebody help me with what is open from beta?
Read through beta's...
Yep.
There's, there are five comments. One is the plan providing the turnarounds. The second is, uh, for us to show the type, the size, and inverts for the culverts going underneath the driveway, uh, underneath the driveways. One of them is actually, uh, just a, uh, section in the long-term operation and maintenance regarding, um, vegetation maintenance, and it was actually in the last submittal, um, but with everything else, it was easy to miss, I'm sure. Um, so, we already addressed that one. The culvert, uh, the fourth one is the culvert at five-plus-thirty on Whisper Way. Uh, Phil's concerned about, uh, some ponding that's happening in the wetland behind the, the culvert. Um, that's certainly, uh, an item that we can work out with him. We will do whatever we have to do to satisfy his, his request to eliminate that ponding. Uh, and the last one is to add labels on the, the map for the operation and maintenance.
And I would just also like to say that the board needs to, um, entertain the discussion on, um, pacing for erosion control and sedimentation concerns.
Mm-hmm. So, I'm just gonna propose, no offense to the applicant, but with four to five things still left to address, to me, that's a little bit much for some type of conditional approval, and I think there's some discussion around those, so...
What I...
That's my personal opinion.
It's my opinion as well, I don't know how the rest of the board is feeling, but, um, but...
I was just trying to save you some parking blows.
Thank you for that. I would recommend that you spend, uh, a little extra time with John and get, um, the decision in an agreeable format, that'll make it easier. And you address with Phil the open issues, recognizing that he has deferred to the board on at least one of them, so we will have that conversation. And if you were to, um, have your decision largely agreed to and worked out with the town plan, like, if you got busy now and got your action items taken care of now, and, uh, worked with John to get a decision drafted, um, it'll go very, um, much more smoothly, um, when we do meet again.
Should we do that September eighth?
It's the ninth, Sunday, the eighth.
Oh, the ninth.
Yes. Um, let me ask...
I mean, I'm assuming you're saying this, this could happen quickly, if, if Phil is satisfied and...
I, that's my feeling, I, you know, I feel like that, that's the will of the board. So, uh, would the board like to contemplate meeting at seven and doing this and whatever administrative work we can do on the ninth?
If I'm seven?
Yeah, it's fine.
I can do the, I can do seven.
Frank?
I find it hard to be here at seven.
I know. Um, so, um... So, what, what we'll do then, how about this? Um, we will crank through our administrative agenda, starting at seven, which frees up meeting time after seven-thirty. Does that help? Okay. All right. So, we're gonna continue your public hearing to, um, seven-thirty, but we're gonna start our meeting at seven. All our public hearings will start at seven-thirty, as we have advertised on all the other ones, but we will have our administrative agenda, um, starting at seven. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the meeting will just start at seven.
Right.
There's no...
We can, we can po, we can start public hearings at seven, we can tell applicants that?
Advertise it.
'Cause we just moved it to, um, the date, not a time.
Right.
Right, we can start at seven, but...
But either way, the applicants don't need to be here till seven-thirty.
Well...
So...
If they are, we can, you know, we can, we can...
Right.
Proceed. So, I would tell people that the meeting starts at seven, but for Frank's concerns, his, his interest in being here,
we'll work through... Say it's seven-fifteen, and then...
We'll work through, yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, with, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to September ninth.
September...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Amy, we will start the September ninth meeting at seven. Um, and it is at the library? It's tentatively at the library, ooh.
It'll be either at the library or here.
Or we have another meeting August twenty-sixth.
Oh, that's right. Happily, we have another meeting August twenty-sixth. Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and thank everybody for your patience.
Thank you very much for your time.
Second, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions?